Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call to roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maples.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gara.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vang.
I am here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Councilmember Valenzuela, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Please rise if you are able for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now, please salute and pledge.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America, to the recompense for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Good afternoon, everyone. My colleagues, members of the city staff, most importantly, the members of the public who are in the chambers and all those watching online or on television. We begin this morning, this afternoon, with two special presentations. And the special presentations begin with Councilmember Jennings, a man with a lot of heart, who's going to recognize the Heart Association.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my privilege and an honor to present a presentation of the American Heart Association's 2023 Mission Lifeline Gold Award to the Sacramento Fire Department. That deserves a round of applause. Let me just say that I am pleased to be associated with anybody that gets gold. As a kid growing up, I wanted to be a part of the relay team with the Americans winning the gold medal, so I feel like I'm a part of the team right now. So I'm thrilled to be able to speak on this item tonight. And this award represents great news for the city of Sacramento, our fire department, but most of all, the real winners are the residents and constituents of the city of Sacramento. The award shows that Sacramento offers optimal care for cardiac and stroke patients, exceeding all industry standards. Here with us tonight are Andy Hoyt, the Quality Improvement Manager for the American Heart Association, and our own fire chief, Chris Castamania. And I want to thank you both for being here with us this evening. And once again, congratulations on this great award. You'll tell us all the details, I know, so I bring you up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here tonight, Mr. Jennings. I want to first introduce to you Andy Hoyt. He's going to talk a little bit about the award, and then I'm going to have some thank yous.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you to the city council, Mayor Steinberg, and everybody here in attendance. So, yeah, my name is Andy Hoyt, and I am a healthcare QI or quality improvement business development manager, I know it's a mouthful, with the American Heart Association, actually American Stroke Association, those two are together. To abbreviate that, we say AHA. On behalf of AHA, I'd like to recognize and congratulate the Sacramento Fire Department on achieving the 2022-23 Mission Lifeline Gold Award plus Heart Attack Honor Roll. That's a whole nother level above that, just so you know. The Mission Lifeline Recognition Program was launched in 2014 and continues to celebrate the achievement of the prehospital providers and their collaboration with each other and hospitals specific to patient care, that continuum of care, which is so important. Key tenants of these systems of care reinforce evidence-based guidelines and measures of performance, identify gaps, which is key, and engaging in quality improvement. Sacramento Fire Department is part of an elite group of prehospital providers recognized by the American Heart Association for their commitment and success in implementing a higher standard of care by ensuring that every STEMI patient, they call that, but what that means is heart attack patient, receives treatment according to nationally accepted evidence-based guidelines, recommendations, and standards. We hope Sac City Fire Department will join the AHA again next year, which we know they will, and submit the agency's success. Next year's award is designed not only to showcase prehospital agencies nationwide for excellence in heart attack, but also in stroke care, too. So congratulations again to the Sacramento Fire Department on this achievement. Your demonstration in timely guidelines-directed care continues to shine for the community you serve. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Jennings.
Good evening, Chief.
So, real quick, I got to brag a little bit.
Please do.
This is the seventh year in a row, so it's very fitting.
You got to say that louder than that.
Yeah.
Come on, tell me.
Let me get these. This is the seventh, seventh year in a row, the seven Pete. So it's fitting that District Seven is also announcing us here tonight. And we have to thank the American Heart Association for bringing our hospital system together and bringing us all together in the region. We couldn't be successful without their help behind the scenes. The paramedics and EMTs every day that are on the streets, providing this service to our constituents and our communities. We also want to thank, talk about the testament to their knowledge and their skills and judgment with every patient that they go in contact with. We want to thank the hospitals for their work and their, basically the receiving point that we get the patient to, and then they take them, and within 90 minutes, they have a good outcome, and that's what we're shooting for. I also want to thank the council for your continued support in our ALS program. And I have to thank some people that aren't always thanked, it's our dispatchers. They make sure that, they make sure that sometimes if somebody doesn't know CPR, they give CPR instructions over the phone, that they start that early CPR with patients. And we get there and take over with a professional rescuer CPR, and it's our community that's doing that CPR sometimes. So a big round of applause to our community as well. Thank you.
So I just want to kind of close it off in saying that it has been said that if you have a heart attack and you want to live, you should have a heart attack in Sacramento. And as somebody who did not have a heart attack but had heart problems, I had them here in Sacramento, and, you know, fortunately, I didn't need your services, but it would be good to know that had I needed them, I would have the services of incredible men and women who work every day to make a difference for those of us who suffer with heart disease. So thank you so much for what you do and for this accomplishment, seven-time winner, seven years in a row. That's huge.
We're looking at eight.
Come on, come on. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We should get a picture.
Yes, yes.
Let's see the picture.
Councilmember, do you want to move down with the group, and then we'll take a quick photo with?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go with you, Coach.
We'll bring the council members over here.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks, Chief, congratulations. Thank you for the recognition.
Great work. High five, high five.
He's your member at work, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, correct. Yes, because you're getting turned. I know you're the, oh, you broke a leg? Oh, because you're walking on my tummy. Thank you.
One, two, and three, one more, one, two, three. Watch your hand. Three.
Okay, come on. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. We appreciate all of our firefighters and our personnel. Do want to also acknowledge and recognize the dispatchers as well. Thank you, Chief, for that. Okay, council members, we have another presentation as well, recognizing Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, and presented by our council member from District Four, Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting a resolution for American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month to Al Arkham, an Islamic college prep school that teaches pre-K through 12th grade. Al Arkham was founded in my district near Southside Park in 1998 with only four students. They provide curriculum for both AP and IB programs and incorporate Arabic language education at all stages of the learning process. The academy also requires students to perform community service that benefits the general public. And just this past May, the school sent a delegation to meet with state officials to advocate for key legislation impacting minority communities, including the Muslim, Sikh, and Black communities. I'd also really like to thank CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations Sacramento Chapter, for the role they played in advocating for this resolution, as well as resolutions across the Sacramento Valley, and really for all of your efforts in fighting discrimination, harassment, and persecution of people across the region. In this time of a lot of hate and bigotry across our country, and even here in our own city, I have to say that the work all of you are doing is essential to making Sacramento a city that truly celebrates its diversity and is a safe place for people of all religions. So I want to thank you so much for doing your work, particularly doing it in District Four. I love going by your school whenever I can, it's a beautiful place. And so I'd like to welcome Omar Altamimi from CARE, and then Brother Asfand Siddiki, who is the General Secretary of the Board for Al Arkham Islamic School. Thank you for joining us here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, first of all, Councilmember Valenzuela. This isn't your first time introducing this, and time and time again, you show up for our community and support us. Thank you to the rest of the Sacramento City Council, to the mayor, to the city manager, for all that you do. I usually don't show up in this space always for resolutions. Usually, I'm here commenting. But, you know, I think, to start, my name is Omar Altamimi, the Policy and Advocacy Coordinator for the Council of American Islamic Relations Sacramento Valley in Central California Office. Our mission is to enhance the understanding of Islam, protect civil rights, promote justice, and empower American Muslims. I remember talking about this last year. I talked about how it was really important to recognize different diverse communities rolling off of the increased hatred we saw post-pandemic. And I think that it still stands that it's important that we recognize diverse communities and the work that they do and contribute, especially considering about a month and a half ago, there was an incident in Rancho Cordova where a man tried running over Muslim families. And it's, you know, although it seems that things are quieting down, it's still important to provide a united front against hate. Part of that work is on the behalf of community organizations, to name a few, MassSSF, which provides social, mental health and social services for the general community, El Masbah, which has provided refugee support, provides a lot of, when refugees actually come into the area, they provide housing, furniture, everything, clothing, everything to diapers as well and backpacks. And so there's a lot of good that the Muslim community does, and there's a lot that's recognized. But often, we don't look at our schools necessarily as sources of, sometimes we write them off as just academic institutions that teach people, you know, the basic sciences, math, and so on. But I think that where Al Arkham stands out, I actually have a few friends that went, and they went to places such as Cornell, UC Davis, Berkeley. And so it produces excellent students through the rigorous education system, but also it partners with these community orgs to make sure that the community is being served. And one of the most important parts of the mission of Al Arkham is to do that, and so we thought it appropriate to recognize them this year. I'll go ahead and pass it off to the General Secretary of the Board, Brother Asfand, but I just wanted to share my thanks and gratitude to you all for presenting this again.
Thank you, Omar. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Asfand Siddiki. I work as a General Secretary for the Board of Al Arkham Islamic School. I have Sister Marwa with me, she's the most powerful in the board, she controls all the money. She's the CFO. So anything, if we have a request, I have to go to her and get it approved. So I was thinking of saying a lot of things about the school, but thank you, Katie, you already covered it. And so the only thing that's left to say here is the thanks. That goes from the bottom of my heart. Back in 98, when the school was being established, the type of support we get from the community is just phenomenal, phenomenal. And as you said, the school started from four students. One of them was my daughter, she graduated back in 2010. And now we have grown into a school which is about 500 students, a little bit more, maybe? Yeah, so a little bit over 500 students. And we are planning to grow further, and we are looking at different buildings that we can acquire as basically expansion projects. So my deepest thank, that comes from the bottom of my heart, not just from me, but from the whole community, the board, and the school administration. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council member. I just also wanted to personally thank CARE for all your work, not only for the Muslim community, but also engaging in any time there's been immigrants and refugees or Siles here, and most recently, for your work in supporting those who were unfortunately misinformed and taken advantage of and brought to Sacramento, and helped them be a support network. You guys have always been there for the community, and we're proud to be here with you as well. So, council member, a quick photo down? Down? Good, thank you. Another round of applause for a wonderful school here.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Great, another round of applause for our educational partners here, making sure that
we're providing an opportunity for our youth. Thank you very much. Okay, as we come up here, Madam Clerk, I think we're moving on to the first item on our agenda today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're moving to the consent calendar. I do have three speakers on this.
Okay. We'll go ahead and proceed with the speakers on the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. And I do want to remind members of the public, this meeting is being video streamed, and it can be viewed later or live on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned into the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. If you would like to speak on this item, if you're in chambers, fill out the speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, raise your hand. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips in chambers, and the hand raise feature in Zoom will be disabled. Each person will have two members to address the council, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in chambers and can be found on our website, copies in the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. I have three speakers, Daniel Savala on item seven, Marbeya Sala on item seven, Twikanda Gu on item nine.
Good evening, Council, Daniel Savala, Executive Director of the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership, District Two constituent. And I am guilty of taking Highway 160 to bypass Del Paso Boulevard to get to Costco. I think a lot of us do that. But I want to speak in support of item seven, and I want to start with a huge shout-out to the Public Works Department and the tremendous work they've been doing. Jennifer and her team have been in the district, they've heard the folks along Del Paso Boulevard, and when the opportunity came, presented itself for the Reconnecting Communities Grant. I know there were a few different study areas throughout the city of Sacramento that were being considered, but thanks to their work and their willingness to meet with constituents in Old North Sacramento, Woodlake, we have a fantastic application that staff have put together to go after a reconnecting communities grant that could really address, it will begin to study and address the environmental injustice that transportation infrastructure has done, has had on Del Paso Boulevard over the last 50 years. There's tons of research, there's a really great documentary that speaks to Highway 160 and how it serves as a tourniquet, diverting traffic from an aging corridor like Del Paso Boulevard. And the opportunity to finally study that and bring to the city of Sacramento an identified problem, hopefully a program budget, and an opportunity to work with the city moving forward to maybe one day find a way to fund a resolution or a solution for this problem. So with that, I urge the council to please support item number seven tonight, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Marbeya Sala, and Twikanda Gu, I believe.
Hi, good evening, and thank you. So I'm Marbeya Sala, I'm President of Gardenland-Northgate Neighborhood Association, I'm also a resident of District Three, and I just want to do a shout-out to Jennifer for reaching out to GNNA to allow us to give comments on the grant that they're submitting and the sensitivities that she had, that gardenland and the railroad, it's right there, it's on the border of Del Paso, yet we're equally impacted, as Del Paso is, with lack of access, lack of safety. And so the thought that she's brought us into the process, and they're looking at bringing in a way to bring in gardenland as part of the grant process, is, we really truly appreciate it, and I like her efforts and her sensitivities to our issues in gardenland. So I, too, urge you to support that planning grant proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Taekwanda on item nine.
Hi, my name is Twikanda Golf, and I just read, this was on air, but I'm homeless, and I was thinking about art part, you know, because I do art, and when I do art, like things that you go through when you're out there homeless, you go through a lot. So I found art is a mental, like it's just a mental stability for me. And like when I see people going down the bike trail mad, angry artists, I invite them to come and do art with me, so we sit and do art and talk and stuff, and then my grandkids love doing art. And so, you know, like, and other people along the bike trail, they see it, and they, you don't have to, they enjoy it, you know, so you don't have to know how to do art or paint or draw, just to come and find your mental release as, you know, with art, is just, or just find something just to, you know, help with what you're going through. So I seen it on the agenda, so I decided to talk about it. I came up here for something different, but that is what I have to say about the art, number nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The final speaker is Thomas Yeats. Thomas, have you unmute?
Hello. I actually am on the wrong agenda here. I support the gardenland people, but I wanted to talk about the transportation issue. Sorry about that.
Thank you for that. Item 11. May I have no more speakers?
All right. I do have members who are up in the queue for the consent calendar. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I briefly want to talk about items number three and eight. This is something that applies to both Councilmember Talamontes and I for the fourth R Expanded Learning Opportunity. When I was on the board last year, I really appreciate the opportunity to partner with the city, and this is an agreement that is coming to that partnership fruition, of which, through this partnership, we are going to be able to provide in natomas unified at several of our sites. We're opening up an additional 120 slots to students who qualify on the Free and Reduce Program, so they will actually, for parents who cannot pay, there will be a reduced fee for childcare, daycare. We know how important that is, and I just appreciate the city partnering with the school district to make sure that we're benefiting 120 families so that they can spend their money elsewhere and know that their child is safe at a city program. And then just on item eight, which is the budgetary adjustments for the code enforcement case management software, I know it's going to take a while for it to be implemented. I would just like a little toggle to have staff come back to me regarding the implementation and how that's going, so that we can stay on top of that, because I think implementing that with code enforcement and everything else is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloie?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Just want to make a quick comment on item number seven in support of this item. I think this is a great move by the staff. I hope that we do get the grant. Highway 60, at the time, it probably sounded extremely good, but without really taking the time and see its impact on the surrounding neighborhood or the businesses. And also, as we're fighting with the level of CO2 that's being put out into the air by the 160 freeway next to all those residents in Woodlake, so this is a great idea, and I hope that we get this grant. And I want to really thank the staff for bringing this and making this a very important and top issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Maples?
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to make a quick comment on item number seven, want to build upon what Councilmember Laloie said. You know, as someone, I represent quite a few communities that could have maybe been eligible for this, including the division between Oak Park and Curtis Park with Highway 99. And I think many of us up here know, and many in the audience know, how devastating, you know, the creation and building of the highways have been and was to many of our communities and the lasting impacts of that. And we, you know, we see that certainly on Del Paso Boulevard. And so I just want to say, you know, I came in, I met with Jennifer and her chief, and I said, "I really think that we should do this in District Five." And you know what? She gave me the most compelling case ever for why, in fact, the 160 in Del Paso is actually the best place to do it, and the most compelling case for the federal government. And I think you're 100% right. And so I just really want to thank you for your work, you and your team, and I'm so excited. I think this is such an excellent application, I cannot fathom whether that the federal government would deny it. So looking forward to the progress on that, and thank you.
Thank you. I'll move the consent calendar. Move the consent calendar, moved and seconded. Very exciting. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. Can we leave the record open for Councilmember?
Yeah.
Well, then, let's rescind the vote for now, so that Councilmember Talamontes has an opportunity to vote, okay? I know she's talking to the city manager. Okay. So, but it's been moved and seconded, we'll come back to the vote in a minute. Item 11, let's talk about active transportation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jennifer Donlin, I am your Transportation Planning Manager, and I'm here with Jeff Jelzma as part of my team. We are honored to staff your Active Transportation Commission. And tonight, we are presenting to you the annual report, probably the first annual report on one of our boards and commissions coming before you tonight. It's pretty exciting stuff. And so I'm going to do a quick introduction, but the most of the presentation will be by Chair Duer Westbrook. So in case you didn't know, the Active Transportation Commission, one of our main powers and duties is to, their main powers and duties is to provide comments to staff and to council on things related to walking and bicycling in the city. We had 10 commission meetings in 2022. Like you and council, we have recess both in July and in December, which is why we only had 10. We heard 25 items in that time, and staff come to the commission to ask input on a corridor design project, such as North Gate or Freeport, or area plans like the Pocket Greenhaven Transportation Plan. We asked for input from them on the Transportation Priorities Plan as we were moving it forward to adoption in November, or grant applications, just like we were just before you, for item seven. We come to them and we ask for their thoughts and their input and their support. And then we also give them presentations on programs that we have, and to get their input and feedback, such as like our speed management program, our red light camera program. And so the commission provides valuable insight for us as staff and to you as council on things related to walking and bicycling in the city. And so there are, as I mentioned, there are seven powers and duties. One of the major powers and duties we're talking about this evening is to report annually to council on recommendations for walking and bicycling in the city. And so tonight is our first report to council in years, apologies for not bringing it earlier. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chair Duer Westbrook, who has nine recommendations.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. As Jennifer mentioned, my name is Allie Duer Westbrook, and I've had the privilege of serving as Chair of the Active Transportation Commission for the past year and a half. I live and work in District Four and walk and bike around the city on a daily Greenhaven Transportation Plan. We asked for input from them on the Transportation Priorities Plan as we were moving it forward to adoption in November, or grant applications, just like we were just before you for item seven. We come to them and we ask for their thoughts and their input and their support. And then we also give them presentations on programs that we have and to get their input and feedback, such as like our speed management program, our red light camera program. And so the commission provides valuable insight for us as staff and to you as council on things related to walking and bicycling in the city. And so there are, as I mentioned, there are seven powers and duties. One of the major powers and duties we're talking about this evening is to report annually to council on recommendations for walking and bicycling in the city. And so tonight is our first report to council in years. Apologies for not bringing it earlier. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chair Duer Westbrook, who has nine recommendations.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. As Jennifer mentioned, my name is Allie Dore Westbrook, and I've had the privilege of serving as chair of the Active Transportation Commission for the past year and a half. I live and work in District Four and walk and bike around the city on a daily basis. Some of my most cherished memories involve biking around our beautiful city, and I want every resident to have the opportunity to experience the same joy. I have also had some of the most life-threatening experiences while using active transportation in our city. More times than I care to count, I've had near misses while traveling in the bike lane or crossing the street at a marked crosswalk. Sadly, this is an experience many folks in our community are familiar with and why I'm so passionate about making changes to support infrastructure for people, not just cars. An apology if this presentation sounds similar for folks on the PNP E-Committee, but I appreciate you listening to it for a second time. This is the first time the Active Transportation Commission has prepared a report since the establishment of our commission in 2018, and I'm excited to share with you our nine recommendations. Before I do that, I just want to acknowledge city staff, specifically Jennifer Donlin Wyatt and Jeff Jelzma, who staff the ATC and worked tirelessly to help meet the city's transportation needs. They have both gone out of their way to support me as chair and are a huge asset to our commission. I would also like to thank my fellow commissioners, some of who are here tonight, please stand up, and all the community members who have taken time out of their busy schedules to engage in this discussion tonight. As you saw in the staff presentation and likely know from your own interactions, it's been a busy year for transportation planning and public works in general. Each month at the ATC, we have the opportunity to hear about the work they're doing and help advance active transportation as a viable mode for all ages and abilities. The ATC appreciates this opportunity to help shape their work, but ultimately believe there's more that can and should be done in order to see the levels of mode shift called for within the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. It will take bold and ambitious leadership from all of you on the council. We know you have it within you, and we're here and ready to support you however we can. Now to our recommendations. Okay, number one, we'd like to see an increase in funding for active transportation. Much of active transportation plans and projects that the city does are supported by regional, state, and federal grants. Over the past two years, the ATC and community have participated numerous conversations around the development of the Transportation Priorities Plan. This plan estimates that it would cost $5 billion to build all the transportation projects identified in plans created over the last 20 years. The city only has $42 million each year to do the work, which would take 100 years to build what is planned. It's imperative that we have the local match needed to be competitive in these grant programs. And so the ATC urges the mayor and council to declare active transportation a priority and identify funding within our own budget. If the city pursues another measure to help fund transportation, the ATC hopes city leaders will prioritize investments in active transportation, transit, and maintenance of existing facilities over capacity expansion projects and new roads and highways. Number two, expand the speed management program. The city and county of Sacramento continue to rank among the top cities in California for fatal and serious injury collisions. In 2017, the city's Vision Zero Resolution was established, which committed to reducing fatality and serious injury collisions. Tragically, we have seen an increase in fatalities and serious injuries within our community, with over five individuals who died this past weekend due to this, due to high speeds of vehicles. The city plans to hire a consultant soon to evaluate citywide speed limits and prepare an implementation plan to comply with AB 43 and AB 1938. The ATC eagerly awaits the results of the study and would like to see a reduction in speeds across the city as soon as possible. Slowing speeds saves lives. We know this, and we need to act accordingly before another life is lost. Number three, work with school districts to develop a citywide safe routes to school program. Ensuring that students have a safe way to travel to school has proven to encourage more walking and biking amongst youth. There are several organizations in the city that help facilitate safe routes to school programs, but there is not a citywide effort to ensure all schools have this resource. Creating a citywide safe routes to school program in partnership with school districts is essential. Having staff that could work to implement the Vision Zero School Safety Study that was completed by the city, provide resources, training, and encouragement events for schools would make a lasting impact on the safety and health of youth in our community. Number four, finalize the construction detour policy. Construction detours that do not properly account for people walking, biking, or with disabilities prohibits people's ability to travel safely and often forces folks into high-speeding traffic unexpectedly, which I'm sure you've all experienced if you walk or bike around the central city. This is unacceptable and should be addressed immediately by ensuring the construction detour policy is completed within 2023 and monitored to ensure the policy is being properly followed. A policy with no monitoring of its effectiveness will not address our current issues. Number five, develop an active transportation dashboard. Creating an online ATC dashboard will have a positive impact on the community's ability to stay updated on efforts underway by our commission. The purpose of this dashboard will be to streamline information so that many members of the public can quickly see all of our efforts in one location and access important data that is collected around walking and biking. Possible information to include on this dashboard could be letters from the ATC to the mayor and council, city policies updated or under review by the ATC, grants the city has applied for and outcomes of each application, projects reviewed, bicycle and pedestrian counts, bicycle and pedestrian injuries and fatalities, and progress on meeting our GHG and VMT targets. Number six, create a Sacramento Quick Builds Bike Way program. The city has proven with corridors like J Street that quick build projects can and do rapidly transform streets and make them safer and more accessible for all users. The ATC believes a program dedicated to building more, dedicated to building more quick build projects should be created. If the city is unable to dedicate funding in next year's budget to create such a program, we highly encourage the city to seek grant funding via the Active Transportation Program, which is administered by the California Transportation Commission or any other sources. And a great example of a city in California that has such a program would be the city of San Diego. That's where we got this idea from, because they've developed a quick build program for their city. Number seven, pilot an electric bike library and promote e-bike incentives. Electric bikes are transformative technology that can greatly increase the range and accessibility of bicycles. After developing these recommendations, we learned about an existing city effort to develop a bike library, which is now in full force in councilmember Maple's district, I believe. So exciting. We applaud that work, but think it needs to be scaled up to better serve our population size and should also have more robust, robust community engagement prior to selecting the bikes. The existing program does not meet these needs. For example, the city of Oakland was recently awarded $1 million grant for the, from the Clean Mobility Options voucher program to purchase 500 e-bikes for low-income neighborhoods. We would like the city of Sacramento to have our e-bike lending program be of similar scale. The city should also be proactive in communicating to residents around any state, regional, or local e-bike incentive programs. And there's plenty out there, and I'd be happy to point any one of you to where those are if you'd like to share those with your constituents. Number eight, increase bike parking. We appreciate the city's existing process to allow residents to request new public bike and scooter parking. While shared rideables are now required to park at bike racks, it has been, it's created some conflict and become evident that our existing bike parking does not meet the demand. The city has funds to install new bike racks in the public rideaway, but bike parking sometimes falls outside of your jurisdiction. We're aware that city staff are looking for creative ways to address this issue, but would like to see additional investment so that more safe and secure, really important, we want it to be secure, bike parking is available for residents and the visiting public. And number nine, reestablish slow and active streets. From December 2020 through July 2021, the Slow and Active Streets Pilot took place in several neighborhoods across Sacramento to create safe and comfortable low-vehicle traffic routes. An evaluation of the pilot was provided to council in September of 2021, and a survey done by the city showed that 60% of residents were supportive of the pilot. Reestablishing the Slow and Active Streets program and incorporating the lessons learned could ensure the program's original goals continue to be met. The ATC would like to see the city bring back the Slow and Active Streets program in neighborhoods that want them. And we understand not everyone does, so we want to emphasize that. We want these to be supported by the community if we bring it back. Thank you for your time. I failed to mention at the start, the recommendations are listed in priority of the ATC, so one to nine. But I'm happy to address any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation and for all the hard work of you and the other members of the Active Transportation Commission. Really is valuable, and I'm going to turn it to my colleagues, and then I want to have a say here. Yeah, we have public comment first. That's right. Of course.
So Mayor, I have 20 speakers signed up on this item.
It's gonna be a while.
And I'll go ahead and call out a few names, and we want to line up in the middle. We'd appreciate it. Ashlyn Zentner, Christina Rogers, Stephen Saffold, Kay Crum. Ashlyn?
Good evening, council. My name is Ashlyn Zentner, and I'm representing 350 Sacramento. We strongly support all nine Active Transportation Commission's recommendations. It is crucial for the city to invest much more funding in the Active Transportation Commission if we want to see a significant reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, which are essential for meeting the city's climate goals. Not only are these initiatives pivotal for addressing climate change, but would also allow safer and greater access to the city for many people. We can only do so much with talk. I think it's time that we see these changes as actions on our streets to address the real threat of climate change. These recommendations would be a substantial step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Christina Rogers?
Good evening, city council. My name is Christina Rogers. I'm the president of Land Park Community Association, and I want to say that we support a safer, more bikeable, walkable city and neighborhoods. School begins for many students on Friday, and that includes my child. The Safe Routes to School program is essential to all of Sacramento's children. Slow and Active Streets was such a hit during the pandemic, like it's been mentioned before, that we really want to have that come back. If you plan to build more housing where people are going to be stacked and packed on top of each other, our car-free open spaces will be more important than ever. And as you look at this plan, remember, no matter what plans are put in place, some people will not think of the safety of others, and I hope that you consider adding more traffic officers to the plan as well. It can be part of the answer to the safer streets where all citizens can live in harmony as they enjoy all of our parks and neighborhood streets. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Stephen, then Kay, then Tomahawk?
Thank you. I'm representing the Land Park Community Association and speaking about the Slow and Active Streets Pilot Act that you've just heard about in Land Park. In 2020, it was created by the Department of Public Works, created a mile-long paved loop pedestrian lane that was used exclusively by cars. And they ended it in July of 2021, as you've just heard. It was an overwhelming success with an over 85% favorable rating. The Land Park community wants to make this pathway permanent. Within that area, it connects to a very wide two-lane, one-way street through the Land Park Golf Course with parking lanes on both sides. It leaves two lanes available for drivers with a sense that they're on a major thoroughfare, and they drive accordingly. Slow and Active Streets Pilot Act claimed half of this roadway back by placing safety cones in the middle of the street, posting signs on the inside lane for pedestrian traffic only. Along 14th Avenue, there was a smaller pedestrian lane that allowed two-way traffic to continue on that street. Park users immediately took to this pathway, filled it with bicyclists, dog walkers, parents with strollers, joggers, rollerbladers, and more. The pilot was a win for everyone involved. Cars could still use the road to access picnic areas and activities. They drove more slowly and coexisted with many other park users. Land Park golfers could more easily cross the road between holes. LPCA proposes that we follow the city's footprint and permanently define the pedestrian space. LPCA is ready to partner with the city.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Kay Crum, Tomahawk Hendren, then Sonia Hendren.
Sir, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Everyone gets two minutes so that we can make sure that we hear everyone. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Kay Crum. I'm in District Six, and I want to first thank the Active Transportation Commission for these recommendations. I think it's really inspiring to see some progress on active transportation and making it a priority. I support all nine of these recommendations, but I wanted to focus on a couple of them. Point one, active transportation needs funding for the, from the city, full stop. The city funds the incredibly expensive infrastructure for personally-owned vehicles, cars. And now we need some funds to support transportation in other modes. We deserve safe and shaded and direct biking routes, biking and walking routes everywhere throughout the city. Point two, speed management is vital for safety. Since the pandemic, cars have been driving a lot faster. They're heavier. They're bigger since people are buying SUVs. In 2021 and 2022, they've been the most dangerous for pedestrians in the U.S. for, in the last 40 years. California alone has seen 1,100 of those pedestrian fatalities for both of those years. And I mean, on a personal note, I was nearly hit on Stockton and McMahon, which is a Vision Zero Top Five Corridor. So we need to meet our Vision Zero goals, and we need slower streets now. Point three, the Safe Routes to Schools, I mean, it ties into the first two. Children deserve to be able to walk and bike to school, and parents deserve to pick up their children without the fear of being hit or killed by a car. And then point nine, reestablish the Slow and Active Streets. Every few days, I hear cars zooming down my little side street at over 40 miles per hour. So it's unsafe for me. It's unsafe for the kids who play on that street. And our neighborhood streets belong to the people who live there, not to the cars who are just speeding on through. And as an aside, Vice Mayor Gieda, I love the comments that you made last week about the e-bikes being key to transitioning how we see transportation. We need funding and shaded bike paths in order to put those e-bikes out there. So while we're waiting for the funding in next year's budget, let's learn from the pandemic and close off some streets through traffic now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Tomahawk Hendren, Sonia Hendren, Dan Allison, Arlette Hodel, then Grace Bardslay.
Hello, I am Tomahawk Hendren. I'm 12 years old and a car-free resident of central Sacramento. I've been a bike commuter for over seven years now. We need to put more money towards active transportation projects. We can't keep putting it off waiting for grants. There's a lot more we can, there's a lot we can do to make this city more bikeable. Around 60% of people nationwide are interested but concerned about biking. One thing we can do to make them feel more comfortable biking our roadways is to lower car speeds. My mom is often scared of cars speed on bigger roads. While personally, I'm unfazed by this, there are a lot of people out there like her who would be willing to start biking more if those two-ton metal beasts didn't go so fast. Sometimes, speed limits are not enough. We also need to narrow a lot of our big roads. Narrow roads and lanes will help put drivers on their guard. Slower cars will make our roads safer for other drivers as well as cyclists. Less accidents will also make people feel more comfortable on the roads. My dad used to bike, but got hit three times, and after that decided to quit. Another reason people quit biking is because their bike keeps getting stolen. Secure bike parking would make people feel a lot more comfortable biking. With portable power tools on the rise, locks and bike racks are not enough. As well as cutting through locks, bike thieves also steal parts off of bikes. A good example of a more secure bike storage solution is bike lockers. They protect your whole bike, so no matter how far or for how long you're gone, you can always come back to your bike in one piece. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Sonia Hendren, following Sonia's Dan Allison, Arlette Hodel, then Grace Bardslay.
Multiple studies have shown that over half of city dwellers would ride a bike if only it were safer. Your constituents want to bike. Instead, they are stuck in an arms race, driving cars to armor themselves against the other drivers. It's not that people necessarily want cars everywhere. What people want is to be safe. You, city council, have the power to put the brakes on this arms race, starting with the recommendations of the Active Transportation Commission. You can offer transportation options leading to healthier, safer, more vibrant, connected, and sustainable communities so that people have the choice to leave the arms race. Last week, I attended my first city council meeting. Last week, I attended my first city council meeting and the comments were so inspiring. But something has been bothering me. Regarding safe routes to schools, a council member said that we want safe routes to everywhere for everyone. And that's great, but the problem is that our children are uniquely vulnerable. And when you take a program meant for a vulnerable group and pivot to a program for everyone, you lose focus on the unique needs of the vulnerable. Our children cannot drive a car to armor themselves legally. They cannot get a license. And why don't we license children? Because they don't have the brain development to actively predict distance and movement at car speeds. So not only can our children not armor themselves, they're the least well-equipped to skillfully dodge. Your own Vision Zero study found that Sacramento had more child pedestrian deaths and severe injuries than any other city in California. We are a leader in killing our children on the street, and those children had no choice. City Council, give us transportation options, but please make sure those options meet the needs of the vulnerable.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dan Allison, then Arlette.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Dan Allison from District Four. I strongly support all of the recommendations included in the 2022 report to the city. In particular, I'd like to address two of them. Number three, develop a citywide safe routes to school program. And number four, finalize the construction detour policy. I was the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for San Juan Unified for 10 years. Having that position funded through federal and ATC grants and district funding allowed completion of many infrastructure projects through collaboration with the city of Citrus Heights and Sacramento County. Most of these would not have occurred without the position. We also offered an extensive program of walking and bicycling education to students and to the community. Civic Thread, Walk Sacramento, then, was a key partner in these efforts and still is. The district still has an active program. I recommend to the city and to SacCity schools that they create and fund a position for a Safe Routes to School Coordinator to head an ongoing program in support of students and their families. It's long past time for the policy to accommodate walkers and bicyclists during construction projects. Nearly every construction project that has occurred in the central city has violated ADA guidelines, which require accommodation. City staff is on record as saying that the city will accommodate walkers and bicyclists if it doesn't impact car traffic. That's wrong. I report things all the time, violations, and sometimes they get fixed, sometimes they don't. It takes a long time. The problem is the city is not writing good traffic plans. They are not auditing the traffic plans and they are not following up. That needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Arlette Hodel, then Grace Bardslay.
Good evening. Arlette Hodel, Active Transportation Commissioner, District One, avid cyclist. A few months into COVID, North Thomas Jib asked if I could develop and teach an online bicycle driver education class for seniors. It was called Better on Bikes. We met weekly online and optionally on Sunday mornings on our bikes, fully masked, socially distanced. At the end of the session in mid-November, almost everyone wanted to keep riding together. A bicycle interest group was born. I taught more online and in-person classes. After every class, a few more people wanted to keep riding and joined our group. Now, near the end of year three, there are 133 people who receive a weekly email with bike-riding opportunities, special rides, opportunities to volunteer, and information regarding advocacy. Seven of these people have become ride leaders. Organized rides are available every day of the week. From March to May this year, more than 100 hours were volunteered to support and encourage others. And the cyclists in our group ride over 35,000 miles a year. This is an example of what can happen when you invest in active transportation through education and community building. And then you reap the additional benefits of better health, new friendships, and combating our climate crisis. Please, follow all the recommendations that Chairperson Elidora Restro-Bruck presented to you, but especially increase funding for active transportation projects. Provide all mobility's with safe routes to their destinations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Grace Bardslay, then Isaac Gonzalez, then MZ.
Hi, good evening. My name is Grace Bardslay and I am a current student at McClatchy High School. Just like countless other students I see on the road every morning, I am lucky enough to live within biking distance of the school, or so I thought. Earlier this year, on February 27th, I had just biked across the train tracks on my way to school when I noticed that there was an excessive amount of traffic. It had rained the day before, and I know many kids were not willing to brave the roads alone, even if they were only a little bit slick. I biked through the crosswalk that is right across the street from Taylor's Market, ready to turn into the bike lane, but I found that there wasn't any room for me. So I opted to bike on the sidewalk instead of dealing with the possibility of getting hit by a car door or squished into the curb by merging cars. At the Vallejo Crosswalk near Marie's Donuts, I saw a car stopped at the light. I waited for a minute or so, straining to make eye contact with the driver through the tinted windows. Finally, I decided to bike across the street and try to get back into the bike lane because the sidewalks up ahead were incredibly narrow and filled with students. The person in the car must not have noticed me, and suddenly they started moving and hit me, nearly knocking me to the ground. Even though I survived with minor scrapes and bruises, I have never biked across that crosswalk again. I try to stay on the sidewalk on the other side of the street, and I have been yelled at before for biking on the wrong side of the sidewalk because I felt that there was no other safe option for me. Every day, getting to school is a struggle, and that day it was only amplified. The cars driving on Freeport near McClatchy dangerously merge and fill the bike lane, opening doors unexpectedly and impatiently, trying to get through the traffic. I do not know if people simply don't see the bike lanes or if they don't understand the importance of respecting their boundaries, but something needs to change so that people like me don't have to wake up every morning scared to make the five-minute bike ride to school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Isaac Gonzalez, then MZ, then Paul Page.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Isaac Gonzalez. I'm an Active Transportation Commissioner for District Six, and I'm the founder of Slow Down Sacramento, a grassroots advocacy organization that launched earlier today. And thank you for all of you who attended and all the support from your staff as well with that. I feel like we're seeing a change in the zeitgeist here. 20 people to speak about the Active Transportation Commission recommendations. It's pretty impressive, you know? And you hear people out here really wanting to reframe the narrative on how we think about how we use our streets, how we prioritize our funding. I think we have a really great opportunity here to collect this energy that's not only in this room, but I think in the streets of our city and in the homes of our residents, and really start to push against what has been a car-centric network and design for generations. And I'm really happy about that. I'm saddened that it's taken so much literally blood to get here, but here we are at a really important moment. I started this new campaign, Slow Down Sacramento, in part because my son always says, "Click it or tick it, Dad," when I get in the car. And I realize, oh, wow, that Caltrans marketing campaign has really imprinted on my son. And we can imprint on young people. They can change the behavior of adults, and that's great. So I thought I'd start Slow Down Sacramento, get kids to change the minds and hearts of their grandparents and moms and dads driving them around. Maybe we can change their behavior. And here we are tonight. We've already heard from so many inspiring young people. They are ready to take the mantle and push this forward. So I'm really happy and really feel like we have good hope here that we can do something in the future. But great recommendations all around, all nine. Obviously, speed's going to be at the center of mind, but changes the built environment. And I'm going to just leave you with one word here. When we talk about it later, I'll email each of you this. Tactical urbanism. It's an affordable and fast way to make real changes to the built environment. The city of New Jersey City did this. They got to Vision Zero one year, zero fatalities, in motorist route. Let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. MZ, then Paul Page, then LaMaya Coleman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start off by thanking Chair Ali for the ATC's work. Really exciting that they're developing a report. Last week, we heard from the climate report, quarterly update, and want to make sure that that isn't missed. I wear lots of hats, but today I'm going to wear my day jobs hat. I work at Climate Plan as their Network and Policy Advocate. One of the things that we did at the state level was pass SB 150, which requires the state to release California's Climate Progress Report, which has just released this past summer. Just literally the first three sentences of this report, I want to just quickly reflect on. Californians are driving more than ever, leading to more pollution, higher costs, more roadway fatalities, and worse daily experiences getting around, despite state planning statutes that encourage better transportation and planning decisions. The core problem is that even well-made plans too often remain just that, plans. The gap between intention and action impairs our daily quality of life and harms communities that have already borne the brunt of past car-dependent planning. Wow, from a state report, right? Sounds familiar on a municipal level. Again, there's this clear link between our climate goals and the Active Transportation Commission's recommendations as solutions to achieving those climate goals, and they won't be achieved without funding and without a serious effort and direction specifically from this council. I also want to just close on the note of equity and access. I happen to be holding my Justice Outside Journal today and invite you to envision what that actually looks like. Just looking at, I was here last week looking at these paintings. What does Sacramento look like where people don't have to worry about cars and how they get around? They can enjoy life with their families. They can enjoy the state of the city. Dream with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Paul Page, LaMaya Coleman, Sue Terranishi?
Thank you. I'd like to express my support for the Active Transportation Commission's, all of the programs that they have here, but specifically, I want to call attention to Item Nine, reestablishing the slow and active streets, and even more drilling down to the part of the Slow and Active Streets program that affected Land Park. In December of 2020, right in the middle of COVID, out of the blue, a brilliant, brilliant thing happened. Half of 18th Street, 19th Street, and part of 14th Avenue were seized for use of pedestrians, totally recreational use in the park. And the very first day, it was filled with people using it. All sorts of people, walking their dogs, riding their bikes. And it was so simple. They put safety cones down the middle of the street and redirected. We now have a current situation where there's a two-lane, one-way street that circles that area. People go too fast. There's no reason. There's not enough traffic for two lanes. Reducing it down to one lane and seizing the other lane in the parking area for pedestrians and active recreationists is a brilliant idea, and most of us in Land Park would love to see it come back. This particular part of the Slow and Active Street program got an 82% favorable rating, only 12% negative. Bring it back, put some green paint on the street and mark that for pedestrian use. It would be easy. It would be a big win for Land Park. We had a tough year. We lost a lot of trees. We lost the zoo. It would be great to have a win for Land Park with the Slow and Active Street program being brought back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have 11 more speakers, LaMaya Coleman, Sue Terranishi, and then Marbeya Sala.
Good evening. My name is LaMaya Coleman. I live in District Four. So I support the whole plan. I want to lift up specifically the funding. Infrastructure obviously costs money, and if I think back to my days of living in Davis, it's just like it was so easy to bike everywhere. Now, obviously Sacramento and Davis are very different, but there's huge bike infrastructure that just facilitates things and makes them so much safer. And given that we're not small like Davis, transit goes hand-in-hand with active transportation. Just like for those bigger distances, you need to have those connections, those links. You need to have the transit system that works well. The redirection of money, don't take it from transit. Let's move away from the car-centricness. The other thing I wanted to lift up was the safe routes to schools. I'm a substitute teacher in SacCity Unified, have subbed at, I don't know, 68 schools or something over 10 years, and I sometimes bike to work. This last year, I was almost exclusively at Willsey Wood Middle School, and sometimes I'd bike there. Depending on when I came and when I left, I would have to ride just one block on 65th Street. But it's scary. It goes so fast, and there's not a good way into the front of the school if you're outside of the times when the gates are open. The gates are open, I don't know, like half an hour before school, half an hour after school. And there's a good reason for that, so that campus is more controlled. There's not after-school fights, before-school fights. But at the same time, it forces people onto 65th, which is not safe. And I know we'll see what's not the only example. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sue Terranishi, Marbeya Sala?
Good evening. My name is Sue Terranishi. I'm a resident and homeowner in District Seven. I'm here representing the Sacramento area bicycle advocates. We've also submitted a letter in support of the recommendations of the ATC. I wanted to especially focus on number one, increasing funding. I happened to be watching the SECOG Land Use Committee meeting on August 3rd earlier this month. They had a consultant, Dr. Larry Frank, who was reporting on the LA Regional Plan Update. And he said that for every dollar spent on active transportation infrastructure from 2016 to 2040, there would be over an $8 return on that investment. Almost $6 of that was in health benefits from fewer expenditures and increased productivity. So that $12 billion investment in active transportation infrastructure would generate over $113 billion in benefits. That was pretty surprising and eye-opening to me. Money spent that way in investing, producing that kind of return would be huge. And we know public health is an issue we need to address. He pointed out that time in the car represents obesity, that the more time that's spent in the car predicts obesity, which we know is a definite problem here. So investing in active transportation will result in healthier residents, something that we all want.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Our next speaker is Marbeya Sala.
Good evening. I'm Marbeya, and I'm also the president of GNNA. And I want to congratulate the Active Transportation Commission for an outstanding report and outstanding recommendations, because that's exactly what we need. But I'm going to, and we obviously support all of their nine recommendations, but I just want to highlight a few that I want to bring attention to. Obviously, we need increased funding. That's critical. And part of the answer is prioritizing and looking at how to prioritize what's available in the city for funding. But also, we need to partnership with the feds and at the state level. And SECOG needs to be a partner in giving monies to these priorities. So, and anything that GNNA can do to support you in those efforts, we're happy to partner with you because we have this beautiful North Gate Mobility Plan that's unfunded. And if we were to have that funded, our community would be able to walk and ride bikes. Right now, no one does it because it's simply not safe. It's not that they don't want to. It's just not safe. Another one is the reduction in speed. We all know that on North Gate and trucks on West Ocaminno, they're speeding. They go incredibly fast, and that results into multiple collisions on a weekly basis. So that would obviously be important to us. And then two more. I really am intrigued with the Quick Build Bike Way program because I'm concerned with this very beautiful North Gate Mobility Plan, whether we're going to get it up in time to be able to support and encourage the use of electric bicycles in our community. So that would be one pathway to do that. And the electric bike.
Thank you for your comments. I have eight speakers online. I have eight speakers online. The first is Thomas Yeats. Thomas, if you'll unmute.
Hi. Thanks for giving me a second chance here. I commuted to downtown for my work 10 miles each way from the suburbs when I was younger. And it kind of felt like I was a matador dodging the bulls back then. Not many bike lanes. I'm really happy to hear all this, about all this movement and all these great things that have been talked about. And I definitely support the nine points from the Active Transportation Committee. What I wanted to mention is there are a lot of people who aren't speaking today yet, that I've heard, who would, who really resent bicyclists, unfortunately. And I think it's good to always have a strategy on how to deal with that. And I would love to see more public outreach, promoting all the great points that have been made today, like the health benefits, the huge impact this would have on the climate disaster, and how we need to diminish emissions. I was fortunate enough to travel to Copenhagen a few years ago, where the streets are covered with bicyclists. Studying those places, it would be helpful. But you've got, you really got a great plan going. I just hope we can really see a lot of people taking advantage of this. And I'd love to see more and more bicycles out there, far more than we see now, taking advantage of this great infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have seven more speakers. The next is Casey McConan.
Hi, Casey McConan, District Four. I just wanted to congratulate the Sacramento Fire Department and our first responders for their excellence. Their ability to quickly address emergencies is paramount to our city's success. And we need to continue allowing for this. Unfortunately, while our built environment allows first responders to quickly address emergencies, it also allows everybody to drive as fast as a first responder. When left unchecked, this dynamic kills pedestrians. Cars in Sacramento are completely unchecked by the built environment and are mostly unchecked by our law enforcement. Cars are heavier than ever, and drivers are more distracted than ever. Because these cars are unchecked, they continue killing Sacramento citizens. Without speed management or speed enforcement, our roads are extremely dangerous. I support the Active Transportation's recommendations and implore the city council to increase funding for active transportation. Without proper investment in active transportation, the city sends a sad message, that they don't care about its people, they care more about its cars. The billion-dollar backlog on active transportation projects is definitely intimidating. If the city is reluctant to allocate money to active transportation, then there must be a path forward for quick builds, because we need quick wins now. And just as an aside, you know, I have the utmost respect for the members of the ATC. And I think it must be one of the hardest jobs in the city. Our commissioners care so deeply about making our roads safe, yet must watch as pedestrians are mowed down on a weekly basis, it seems. Please heed their recommendations and please do something.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ.
Yeah, I support all recommendations of the ATC. If we want to address climate change, we need to prioritize alternatives, modes of transportation. If we want to free up land, currently prioritize for infrequent personal vehicle usage to allow for more densely built housing and mixed-use building and activate our downtown grid. We need to prioritize transit and alternate modes of transit like bikes and walking. This means not just designing around them, but designing around the idea of slowing cars down. Free design is literally used as a speed limiter in countries all over the world. There is no reason why we wouldn't have it here. Stop signs aren't enough. You'd know that if you'd ever seen someone accelerating as fast as they can before they hit red light after red light, block after block downtown. Our streets need to be hard to navigate for cars, so they must slow down or risk damaging their cars. This is done with landscaping, trees, and barricades. But you have to care more about the pedestrian's life than the driver's convenience. And that's really what it comes down to. These measures are especially necessary when we have events that bring folks into areas they're not familiar. I've lived on the grid for over two decades, and I frequently see suburbanites coming to the grid and not knowing how to drive because they aren't familiar. And end up driving unsafely as a result. I experienced that directly this past weekend when I was hit by an SUV while riding my bike near an active farmer's market. And while the driver and passengers were very apologetic and even offered me a ride back to my place, I didn't stop them from driving down a two-lane, one-way road and turning left from the right lane, over an active lane of traffic. Distractions happen, and we need to anticipate for safety's sake, especially if we want people to visit a variety of places around the city that they're not familiar with. The irony would have been thick if in the process of giving me a ride home, we'd gotten in a car accident. But this isn't a joking matter. I work downtown in a building with possibly over 100 bike riders. Some have been killed. I am still sore and haven't regained full range of motion, but I work an office job. For a minimum wage worker, this could have been resulted in loss of income, job, eviction, or worse. And these are the consequences we have to consider when we design roads for vehicle convenience over pedestrian lives. Prioritize pedestrians, bikes, and transit.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ansel Lundberg. I have five more speakers.
Yes, hello. My name is Ansel Lundberg. I am a District Seven resident and homeowner. And I'm a board member of House Sacramento, a pro housing organization in Sacramento. I'm calling in strong support of the Active Transportation Commission's recommendations. I live off of 21st Street in Curtis Park, and the speed limit is 25. But if you've ever driven or walked or biked there, you know people always speed because of the design of the street. It's designed like a freeway. We need to change these kinds of streets throughout our city. I do commend the city's transportation priorities program that exists. Neighborhoods like mine have seen investment in safer streets. And there are neighborhoods across the city that have not had that privilege. And so it's critical that funding goes to those areas of the city and areas of need. Housing, as a housing advocate, building more housing goes hand-in-hand with car-free transportation. So these recommendations fit perfectly with our housing advocacy in Sacramento. My wife and I are expecting a baby soon, and we have been looking at daycares recently. And we're finding it's very difficult to find a safe location that we could bike to, to drop off and pick up our children. So I just want you all to think about the future of the city and the kind of place we want it to be for families and people to live. And I love what the ATC has done, but they don't have a lot of authority. But they have a very strong and well-informed voice. So I ask you to respect and acknowledge that authority. This is where it has become your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Angela Kermouch.
Hi, my name is Angela Kermouch, and I live in Sacramento. I ride my bike. I walk. I use public transit throughout the city. So I'm here to support safe, active transportation infrastructure, including all nine points that were laid out by the commission. In my last job, I was an urban designer at New York City Department of Transportation. So I designed and implemented safe infrastructure, including protected bike lanes, raised crosswalks, pedestrian curb extensions, and some of them in low-cost, you know, quick-build ways. So paint, flexible ballards, things like that. In all of our data collected before and after the projects were implemented, it consistently showed fewer crashes, fewer severe crashes, and fewer fatalities throughout the city. So in short, these things really work, and they protect people. And Sacramento needs more of them. Furthermore, as other people have mentioned in interviews with people, they constantly said they wanted to bike more, they wanted to walk more, but they didn't feel safe. And so safe infrastructure, you build it and they will come. We saw that throughout New York City, and that will happen in Sacramento as well. So I fully support all nine points that the commission laid out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Greetings, City Council. Just want to give a heartfelt shout-out and thank you to the members of the Active Transportation Commission. Like so many commissions in Sacramento City, they do tireless work on behalf of everyday community members, and they volunteer this work, doing this to really make sure that our policies and values, as well as our practices, align with the best interests and values and prioritize the well-being of all community members. And these recommendations that they've put forward are completely reasonable. So I don't see why anyone would, in the city council, would actively oppose things like increasing funding for active transportation or creating a quick-build bikeways program to really increase and invest in alternative modes of transportation, given our countless emergencies, as well as the number of statistics of people getting hit in Sacramento City to make it one of the most dangerous pedestrians in the world, if not like in the country, at minimum. But I really want to encourage the city council to take action on this. I see that it's noted, that it's noted as receive and file. But as so many commissions have learned, the hard way is that oftentimes when they are heard here at this body, they oftentimes don't get implemented. And I think it's really important that beyond just receive and file, this actually is given a specific date for end honest session for when these, when or if these will be approved in a timely manner. So I really want to encourage this council to support its appointed commissioners who are volunteering to do this work. And really, again, thank you so much to Ally and so many others on the Active Transportation Commission.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Connor F. And after Connor, we have one more speaker.
Hello, Council. My name is Connor Finney. And I am calling in full support of the Active Transportation Commission's recommendations. I think just, there's been so many great comments tonight. Nothing that I could say, I think, could be said any better by anyone else. However, there is one thing that I think I would want to raise is not only is this a pedestrian safety issue, but this is also a racial justice issue. You know, everyone has seen the headlines. Pedestrian deaths are at an all-time high. However, the racial disparity of these deaths are pretty stark. Black Americans are 80% more likely to be hit by a car per mile walked than their white pedestrian counterparts. And we should take that extremely seriously, especially when we are considering where to make safe streets improvements all over this city. You know, I live on a street that has recently seen a protected bike lane. It has made my street a lot safer. And I think that it is very important that some of the disinvested communities in Sacramento also receive these investments. Thank you so much for your time. And yeah, just want to thank everyone for showing up. It's just, it's very important.
Thank you for your comments. Louis Romo is our final speaker on this item. Louis, if you'll unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay. Hi, I'm a renter from District Four. I'm a member of House Sacramento. I strongly support the Active Transportation Commission's nine recommendations for walking and biking in the city. City Council, it's your responsibility to take action to reverse traffic law violations and associated safety impacts, including injuries and deaths in the city of Sacramento. Sacramento is becoming a dangerous place to move around. I live off of 28th and I Street. I love all the new bike lanes. It's been great to see that pop up all around the city. But unfortunately, J Street is near my apartment, and there's just endless amounts of speeding. There's other streets all around the city too, not just on the grid. It's just, it's the norm now. Everyone speeds, it seems like. Cars are a menace. And it's great seeing more and more people bike and walk. But you know, we need to do a lot more to improve that. So what the Transportation Committee is presenting is great. Fully support it. And I hope you guys do everything in your power to support it and improve it even more. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's now turn it over to the members of the city council. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody who called in. Special props to Ally, D4 Commissioner, great job as chair. But to all of the Active Transportation Commissioners, you all do this as unpaid volunteers in addition to robust other volunteer and professional commitments. So just want to continue to always recognize this report that you put together. I mean, this is going to be very similar to some of the comments I made last week on the Climate Action Plan, because it really is, at its core, a matter of budget priorities. And I want to appreciate that you made that the first bullet on the recommendation, because it is really the core of the issue here. How do we pay for more people? Like, the only way we're going to get to our climate targets is to reduce vehicle travel. The only way we're going to reduce vehicle travel is to make it safe to do so. I want to compliment and lift up the comment about targeting vulnerable communities, because I think students, I mean, we saw what happened when we started paying for free student bus passes and removed that one barrier. Student ridership like tripled in a very short amount of time. So imagine what would happen if we continued to remove barriers for students to take active transportation, take transit, and what that means for the rest of their lives when they learn that they can get around to where they need to go safely without needing a car and how that invests truly in our future. So that will cost money. And I want to also lift up what Sue said about the magnifying effect that local investment has. It's like, when we put a dollar into active transportation, they're pulling down state money, they're pulling down federal money. And that doesn't even begin to account for all the benefits that we see in reduced injuries, increased public safety, increased health, all of the things that happen when we do that. And so I'm really excited about the mayor's ballot measure that he announced on Friday. And I won't preempt his comments, because I'm sure he's going to talk about it.
Oh, go ahead.
But I'm excited, because I mean, there's so much money in these measures that goes to roads and new road construction that like, just a fraction of that money, $240 million for a new freeway, that's only going to induce more sprawls. Like, imagine $240, Jennifer, if you had that, what you would do. I mean, that could easily turn into a billion dollars of projects in our city. And right out the gate, we're starting to make a meaningful impact in the real barriers that exist. And that's incredible. But I will say that in addition to supporting an idea of a funding measure, we also know that that's going to take at least a year, if not longer, to materialize. So what do we do now? I just want to echo that, like, we've really heard the "now", and I want to appreciate Isaac and the slowdown Sacramento movement. I was proud to stand with you briefly this morning. It's something we can do today, is just say, "Slow down, do the speed limit", but it's not enough. It's just not enough. I mean, all of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements we need to do, we know there's so much we can do in the built environment. So I do want to say that I want to lift up what you said, something during PNP E, about the fact that you sent this report to us in February. And you did that very intentionally, I think, because they were trying to get it to us before we decided the budget. They were very intentionally trying to say, "We have all these needs. We know there's money needed." And they were trying to get it to the council before we decided our budget, so that we could incorporate this into what's now been an adopted budget for the next year. And so, Mayor, I know in our last budget, we talked a lot about more participatory budgeting-type process next year. Like, what would it look like to get the budget, not in May, so that you only have a couple rounds of opportunity to give comments, but to get ideas earlier, to really work with our commissions, not just the Measure U Commission, Marbella, and the audience every week, but all of our commissions, to really build engagement, to have those discussions with communities, and to bring us ideas and proposals that we can really weigh out with other city priorities and really make that judgment call. So I want to make that one of the next steps today, is that, I mean, it's already August. It's actually going to be September on Friday, if you can believe it. I still can't believe it. I feel like the summer just disappeared. But it's going to be budget season before we know it. And so I really want to make that one of the next steps today, is direction to the city manager to include our commissions in that participatory process. I think our Parks Commissioners, our Police Commissioners, our Active Transportation, I mean, our Measure U Commissioners, they all have a role to play in really helping us design a budget that reflects our needs today as we continue to work on the important things like the mayor's proposed ballot measure for the future. So want to put that out there. And then to say that there's some other things in this list that we can and should do now. And so I would love to hear staff talk a little bit about. I'm so glad, Isaac, that you mentioned tactical urbanism, because I remember a time about a decade ago when we were trying to do tactical urbanism on Franklin Boulevard next to Maple Elementary, right when it was churning into the Maple Community Center. And I got to tell you, those city staff were lovely. I miss Bucky. He was a wonderful individual. But he had no idea what we were talking about. And was like, "You can't do this. That's not safe." And I appreciate the need to maintain safety. But I've heard that brought up again with concerns on like Land Park Boulevard and other areas where they're like, "Well, why can't we just create a temporary traffic circle? Why can't we just create some of these other things and try it on for size, see how it looks?" So I want to think about, how do we create a program that enables that to happen while balancing the real safety concerns? Because I get it, you're a driver, you're going down a street, it's dark. You see something you're not used to, you're not you're not used to, you're not going to know how to navigate around it, and we don't want to end up in that situation. However, I do think there's so many cool models in other cities now. So I would love to hear you talk about that, because I'd love to think about how that marries with the idea of bringing slow and active streets back, because that was really at its core, right? Was just that we didn't have the money to sustain it, and we couldn't keep going out and replacing the barricades and replacing the barriers and, and doing that over and over again. And we had some sighting issues with a few of the examples, but not in Land Park. I mean, because Land Park folks were like, over and over and over again, like, we love it, we love it, keep it, keep it. And we just couldn't afford it. So I see a marrying between like quick builds, tactical urbanism, and slow streets, and how do we just create a pathway for citizens to be able to say, we really want this, and if we can meet this measure, we should be able to do it, and maybe get approval from the city, but then just move, move forth. And so I'd love to hear you respond to that specific one. And then I also would love to hear about the construction detour policy update, because as was mentioned by Dan, who is a vigilant steward of our policies across District Four. We have a lot of construction in the central city and other parts of the city. I hear from cyclists a lot, I have seen it a lot, just walking and living around downtown, midtown. How do we increase? Because those are the sort of things that we can do with staff time, which granted does not cost nothing, but at least is something that moves us in the right direction while we work on this budget process. And I know the city clerk is thinking about websites, because the Active Transportation Commission is not the only commission that's like, we want a website, and so just want to lift that up as well. But Jennifer, would love to hear you talk about tactical urbanism, how we might think about that in the construction detour policy.
Absolutely, Councilmember Valenzuela. So tactical urbanism first, it is a great concept, and in many ways, you referenced Bucky. So Bucky was somebody who led our traffic investigators many years ago, retired three or four years ago. The work that our traffic investigators do is in many ways tactical urbanism on a smaller scale. It's responding to traffic issues, doing quick builds, and working to resolve those. The biggest challenge for us in doing these, these tactical urbanism projects or efforts is funding. We don't have the funding to build them, whether it is a tactical urbanism traffic circle, roundabout, which is $100,000, which we don't have, to smaller interventions that might be $20,000. It's, materials are expensive, they're not free, and so that's, I think, our biggest challenge in facing and meeting the needs of tactical urbanism. I don't think necessarily that the department has concerns with quick builds around things like that. I think the bigger challenge is the funding for that.
I would love to think about what it looks like to put out guidelines for residents to do tactical urbanism. And so when I use the Franklin Boulevard example, we had grant funding. I was working at a nonprofit. We were working with that school and the people who were working around that neighborhood. We wanted to come in, Karen Kumar, who's now Strategic Growth Council, and I, who was at Walk Sacramento, were like, we can do this. And we ended up having to do it like on the asphalt basketball course within Maple Elementary, because that was the only way we could try to symbolize like, what does a protected bike lane look like, without being able to go out into the street. So I think what I'm hearing from folks isn't necessarily, we want the city to do that, although I'm sure many people would love to be able to snap their fingers and have us do a lot of things. But what I would love to think about is doing while we work on the funding piece, is what if we put out guidelines that said, if you want to do this, here are the standards you need to meet. If you wanted to close that Land Park Street permanently, if you wanted to do a temporary install, here's what you need to do to do that. And then we, as a city, will be like, cool, stamp it, ship it, you're good, you met the requirements, and you can do what you need to do. So that's sort of the idea that I'm thinking of.
Okay, Councilmember. That is something for our city traffic engineer to weigh on, David Adraslan. So we'll, we'll check in with Dave, and we'll circle back with you on what we can do around that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, construction detours.
Construction detours. So we've been working on the construction detour policy to better accommodate people walking and biking through work zones. We had a challenge with staffing, staff capacity. I lost half of my team during the pandemic, and we weren't able to move it forward. We have staff back up, and we are moving it forward. We're still, it's been a capacity issue. It's purely and simply the reason why we haven't moved it forward. But we heard when we took this to PNP, that it was a priority for the council members on PNP, and we are working to move it forward. It is currently unprocessed, moving forward. My goal is to take it out for public engagement and input, because we want input from the building trades who are doing that work, who are impacting, impacting the right of way. We want input from the walking and biking community as well, to say, what do they think about the, the new policy? So our goal is to bring it out to the communities in, this year, in 2023, for their input, with the goal of implementing it in 2024.
Very exciting update. Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you for all you're doing. And again, thank the committee for what you're doing. Again, my direction is that like when we do this new participatory, more participatory process, because it won't be a full participatory budgeting, but at least we'll engage the community earlier that the commissions be a big part of that, so that they can help make sure we maintain focus and build in these priorities from the beginning. So thank you all so much.
So Vice Mayor Guerra is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, let me just thank, you know, Jennifer and all of your team for many years of work on this, where we are today. And also special shout out, shout out to my District Six Commissioners, Commissioner Isaac Gonzalez, and then former Commissioner Manuel Buenrostró, who's willing to make a move to make, to bring some more influence on the board as well here on the commission. And then also to Chair and Commissioner Ali Westbrook. So thank you so much for your work. Not only that, but folks don't know that every year I've got an opportu, opportune, opportunity to work with Chair Westbrook on Clean Air Day. And so California Clean Air Day, so we work with other regions throughout the state every year. This year, it's October 4th, is that correct? And, and advocating what we can do for Clean Air Day. And so I want to put that first on everyone's calendar, October 4th, California Clean Air Day. We can all do our part to help people see what we, and experience what a city would be like if we all made some slight changes in, in our behavior. So thank you to the Active Transportation Commission for these points. I'm excited about memorializing these points, and some of them, I do want to take the time to recognize the success that our staff has already done. We're, we're already moving on the checking out the e-bike program and having people, in fact, I already was talking to my colleagues here about, you know, how, what I went through in the process of purchasing an e-bike, and how transformative it has been for our family to, instead of buying a minivan, you know, we bought a cargo bike. And it's been our commuter option. And I appreciate it, because that's one less insurance payment, one less gas payment, maintenance payment that we have to do, and at the same time, I'm getting a little exercise at the same time, but the kids are enjoying it. More importantly, if you can imagine if everyone took one day out of their day when they didn't drive, that means we could reduce our emissions by 20%. We could reduce congestion by 20%, but that doesn't happen on its own. And these recommendations, I think, are, are clear and important. So we're trying out the e-bikes and testing out folks, because I do believe, as I mentioned last time, that, that the, the electric bike revolution and the advancement of battery technology, and then the stability on that, is going to change how more people take advantage of, of it, particularly in Sacramento, where we're relatively flat, and frankly, with an e-bike, you don't even notice it. I mean, we took it to the Sac Republic Game with some of my family friends from South SAC, and we used the overbike crossing over the, over the light, over the train tracks, and didn't even notice we were going uphill. It's an amazing opportunity. But again, to get that bike crossing, it took funding. And, you know, that is one of the biggest issues when we look at our next transportation measure. Active transportation has to be a, a big key in it. I also don't want to forget about, you know, we're talking about this new tech, technology, you know, e-bikes and whatnot, but I want, I want to make sure we don't forget old tech transportation. And that old tech transportation is called walking, you know? So sidewalks, we should be thinking about how we can, how our city, how our county, particularly in older parts of our county, we can support in a future measure, helping the issue of sidewalks. We know that many folks who are seniors, who've been lived in their homes for a lot of times, their sidewalks have uprooted, and they have a difficult time replacing those sidewalks. And so we should be figuring out all that. So that's one comment I would ask our, ask Active Transportation Commission to look at, is the issue of sidewalks and the debate over the rolled curb versus the hard curb. I, I rode, I wore my, my Caltrans orange tie today. You know, Commissioner Westbrook and I have the privilege of both have, have worked at Caltrans, he still works at Caltrans. And, you know, there's a love hate relationship with active transportation at Caltrans for those of us, and I always took the light rail to the trans lab and, and would walk or bike there when I worked there. But it, it is a, it is a dynamic change. So I'm, I'm, I'm very proud that our city's Public Works Department is starting to look things differently. Matt Ironman, our new Public Works Director over there, Assistant City Manager over that area, had a conversation about how we can really look at parking and, and those impacts to change that, to make sure that we're looking at how we adjust the movement of vehicles so that our public right of way is, is for the public, not for, just for cars, for making sure that we're making it for everyone. The development of a dashboard, I think that's a great idea. I don't think we, in, since we just started discussing Vision Zero, and I think that was back in 2015, 2016, I don't recall like a dashboard of how, how we're tracking that. And so I think that's an ingenious way for us to help keep ourselves accountable. And as this council has changed over time since I've been here, from a different mayor to different council members, it's going to be helpful for the future council. The, the work of the Active Transportation Commission, as all of us, you know, participate and give our time into this, should be evolving and being able to keep us on track. The comment today, I took it to heart about not diluting the very limited resources we have. I do think very clearly that focusing on safer routes to schools is critical, and an aspirational is to get everyone, but if we don't create safe routes to schools where our young kids find it safe, or parents find it safe, and we don't create a habit and a custom and a practice early on, then how will we ever expect adults in the future to ever want to look at different forms of transportation if we don't, if we don't focus that from early onset? And how tragic is it that we had a young kid killed on Fruit Ridge and 58th? And I remember that, that one of the motivating reasons for me to join the Neighborhood Association in Tahoe Park. When that happened near my house, this is over, over, well over 10 years ago, but it still sticks in, in my mind, how tragic that most recently, we had the life of a mother who was just dropping off her kids because of speeding and the way things, our roadways are designed. And, and to have three way, three lanes in a single direction in a residential area, I mean, to me, that, that's always, I've always found it, you know, difficult, because even if you try to cross those boulevards, imagine when, when you, the folks who take, who are seniors who have mobility challenges, trying to cross those boulevards at those speeds, it, it becomes a danger. So I think all of the recommendations here about figuring out how do we prioritize, you know, the, our active transportation, means we also got to look at our, our current structure there. The slow and active streets, boy, man, I'll tell you, I, I saw the photo there, that was at Tahoe Park, and I, I had a lot of angry callers, had a lot of positive callers. And I think the big lesson there is that we shouldn't throw out the baby with the bath water. We definitely saw some benefits. We had more folks out there walking, and I think it's in an area where we should continue to, to look at, where, where are corridors where we can kind of incentivize that? And it may be this tactical, looking at this, you know, quick build options to be able to help us identify those locations. I think they, they go hand in hand. One, and one area that wasn't discussed here, which I think is still critical, is we need to also look at traffic enforcement. I mean, the fact is, you know, we have lost many of our, and not been able to fill all our positions on traffic enforcement. That is part of the built environment. And without enforcement, without built environment, then it's hard to change that culture of, and, of the speeding that we do have. So I'm excited about this. I do want to also remind folks and recognize that the staff, that our staff did go out to the schools, and we did reduce the, the, the speed zones in a lot of the elementary schools. Earl Warren, Mark Twain Elementary, you know, all of the schools, all the elementary schools in Southeast SAC got reduction in those speed zones. But what we found, as we knew, it was the parents who were speeding. And so a big call to parents, like, once you drop your kid off, don't forget there are other kids there. And we see that over and over again. Parents are very cautious, they drop their kids off, they make sure they, they cross over. And then after that, you know, if, if anybody remembers the Disney Mr. Wheeler cartoon, it's like they change. And so maybe ditting myself there, but I do think that, 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 that I, that the focusing on safer routes to school, looking at those speed programs where we're encouraging more walking, walking and biking are, are, are a good way to go. And I hope that in, in our big, again, our biggest discussion, yes, the city has its, its, its budget, and we can, I think, do tactical things, but until we have a bigger transportation measure, because some of these infrastructure projects are in the multimillions, where it really needs a significant change, I think we're going to have this challenge. So as we all, all of us sit on different boards, as we move forward in those conversations, active transportation needs to be a big component of it. The last plug, there's a huge economic benefit to this, because when, you know, we're, when we have not only Amgen for the bike, for the cyclists, but when you're riding your bike around town, you start noticing the small local shops. You start noticing your local businesses, and you stop, and if you have biking infrastructure to lock your bike up, then you stop and you shop in places you normally would, that you would just fly by in your car. And so there is a huge economic benefit that I think is going to support our local businesses with that. So those are just some comments there. I just want to congratulate all the, the, the work that the Active Transportation Commission is doing. When I was County Planning Commissioner, we talked about the bike master plan for the county, but it was nowhere as thoughtful as it is and robust in this, in this form. So thanks again. And since the mayor's gone, I'll pass this over to Mayor Protem Miveng.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much for your comments and insight. It, I need to hit my queue faster, because my colleagues have said a lot that I've said already, so I'm going to do my best not to repeat and try to keep this really fast, because I know there are other colleagues on the queue. So first, Jennifer and Jeff, I just want to say thank you so much for your heart, your hustle, and all your work, really, one, in supporting our commission, right? You know, our commissioners are volunteers, and they spend their time really providing their insight and experience, but nothing gets done with our staff, making sure that we support our commission, so I want to say thank you. Also, just want to give kudos to all of the folks that came here today to speak during public comment and really share your recommendation as well, and those who called in on Zoom. Ally, thank you so much. I think the commission will be so proud of you, your colleagues, you did a great job with a very thorough presentation. And then I also want to give a shout out to my commissioner, who's probably watching right now, Ron Brazel as well, want to thank him for his hard work. I fully support all nine recommendations, but I think you've heard from my colleagues that the big elephant in the room is really the dollars, right? Making sure that we have the funding to support these recommendations. For recommendation one in particular, that falls on the mayor and council, right? Invest in active transportation. And I know staff have shared with us that right now we have about $5.4 billion in road and traffic for maintenance. So I just want to share that, right? And just for active transportation, it's about $5 billion, is that correct? Right? And that's not even, that's like five times our budget, right? So while we work really hard as mayor and council to, to chip away with grant dollars, it's going to be really important that we find those, those dollars, you know, the revenues, right? And so, you know, echoing Councilwoman Valenzuela, really excited about the mayor's potential ballot proposal as well, and hopefully that, you know, that will be transformative and that will pass and give us additional dollars. But we also have to figure out within our own budget, you know, what are we willing to prioritize in our own budget to address some of the recommendations that might be a little bit easier, right? And so I think you heard earlier from a public commenter, that for every dollar we spend on active transportation, that's $8 in return, right? That's money that, that we're, we're saving. And so I do support all the recommendations, but I, I want to uplift two in particular. One is really expanding the speed management program. I am in full support of this. We know that the higher the speed, the larger the fatality and the outcomes, right? High speeds makes a crash more likely, because the impact is harder, and actually for drivers, they have less time to react, right? It also requires them to, you know, slow down and stop, slow down. Which reminds me, you know, as we're welcoming our, our scholars on Thursday, especially SAC City students in South Sacramento who are either walking, biking, or driving, this is the reason why recommendation number three is so important, making sure that we actually have, that we're working with our school district. I know there's multiple school districts in the city of Sacramento, but that we actually develop a citywide safe routes to school. And so I'm in full support of that. And back to the slowing down, you know, earlier I had the opportunity to stand in solidarity with Councilwoman Valenzuela, Councilwoman Kaplan, and Vice Mayor Guerra, to launch, to support a launch of a community awareness campaign led by Isaac Gonzalez, and so many local residents that's leading this effort, because we know that we could chip away at the infrastructure, but if we don't change our own behaviors, right? Many of us in the room drive, right? We're behind the wheel, and so making sure that we take self accountability in terms of the ways in which we may be contributing to the harm as well. And so just want to uplift that. I want to put a plug in for the website, it's slowsacramento.org. If you haven't made the pledge, check it out, right?[1785.44] Join the movement and really also join the effort to remind Sacramentoans to slow down. And so I just want to say I support all the nine recommendations. This item in particular is not an action item, it is just to receive and file, but I actually would like to make a recommendation in terms of direction, and hopefully the mayor and council will support this as well. As I shared earlier, the dollars is incredibly important. When you think about recommendations that come from our commission, and they put their heart and soul into this, I really want to see the ways in which we can actually implement the nine recommendation. And so what I actually would like to request is that I would love to see an actual budget proposal presented to budget and audit, and also our Active Transportation Commission, particularly from Jennifer, if our city manager allows that, to begin, to actually share a budget proposal with us of what would it actually take to just implement the nine recommendation? I know some of the nine recommendations, we're already kind of doing it. I heard from, you know, Vice Mayor Guerra talking about the e-bikes, there are the policy piece, so some of these we're already doing, but it'd be great to see like what the budget dollar is for those nine recommendations. Obviously, recommendation number one, that falls on council and mayor, right? With the ballot proposal, you know, priorities, but for the other recommendation, I would love to see what it will actually take, because, you know, I don't want these recommendations to be just filed and received and filed and we're done, but how do we actually hold ourselves accountable to these recommendations? So my recommendation is to bring back a budget proposal, right, of what it would take to implement the other recommendations, and present that to budget and audit, right? And so that we can make a decision, bring it forth to the full council for a vote when it's time for budget. And so that would be my recommendation. Right now, I want to make sure if there's anything else. Yeah, that's my only recommendation, because it comes down to dollars, right? We can make these recommendations, but we don't have the dollars to support it, but we don't know what that amount is. And I'm going to ask Jennifer, do you know what that amount is? If you do, that's great. If you don't, you don't. So that would be my recommendation, Mayor. I know this is not an action item, but my recommendation is for staff to actually bring back a budget proposal of the nine recommendation of what it would take to budget and audit for us to have a conversation and then bring it forth to the full council.
I think that's great. I mean, again, we're going to have to consider the actual budgeting in the context of either the mid-year budget or the budget, but absolutely to tee this up, so to speak, early, so that we can pose this as one of the choices that the city council has to make, makes a lot of sense. And it might, also might educate the voters about their options in 2024. Love it. Okay. Is that, I think that's just, I think that's just direction, and I think we'll work with the city manager and team here, and we'll bring that back.
It's a recent file, but can I ask, can I add a timeline to that, just because, like, that's really important?
As a matter of direction, sure.
Okay, so I'm thinking about budget, yeah, tomorrow. I think I would like to see it by the end of the year, by December, if possible. Is that possible?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Absolutely do.
Okay, great, so let's make sure. And then that's on record just for our commissioner, so there'll be a report back to y'all as well. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, actually, Mayor Pro Tem Vang, because Steinberg, you, Mayor, you asked us at PNP E to set up.
Steinberg's my name.
I know, Steinberg, I know, what can I say? Mayor, to set up a process, and we heard loud and clear, our commissions and our commissioners want to have a voice. And this is actually being presented tonight, is part of that process of now asking every one of our boards and commissions to come up with their work plan. What is their work plan? So Mayor Pro Tem, you actually have a really good idea of, honestly, the active transportation is the model of what a plan should look like, but I think maybe part two, as we're getting into this, is when they make recommendations, work with staff as it's part of what would it cost to implement. So when these reports come to us, we know that there's follow-through, and there's a thoughtful process of budgeting, because my hope is when these annual reports come to us, we see them, and we as council members can take them into consideration of how we want to further the commissioner's voice and their recommendations and opinions, because it's really about specifically their charge of what are we doing on walking and bicycling, and how do we make Sacramento safe, which they're the experts. So I want to thank my active transportation commissioner, because she's a leader in our area. You guys heard Arlette of what she was able to create during the pandemic. I am proud to have her on as our voice in District One, because that is a very important issue for us, because we have the North Natomas Transportation Management Association, and the taxpayers in North Natomas do fund and do pay for, you know, a coordinator with safe routes to school, and we are a leader in the city in that, but there is more that we can do. So a couple of questions. I know in recommendation two, we asked that we're looking to do, get a consultant to evaluate the citywide speed limits and prepare an implementation plan. What's, where are we on all of that?
Councilmember Kaplan, that is in regards to AB 43, which allows us to lower speed limits under certain circumstances. Our partners in traffic engineering are getting ready to issue that RFP now to help us with that, just be staff capacity challenges.
And what is the estimate for when a report is going to be done? Is it a year from now? Is it something that we could, is it six months from now?
I don't have that information, but we can bring that back to you.
Okay, great. Just, I think that's part of, as we get this annual report, something that you can let active transportation know, and as part of the follow-up. And also, it notes that in recommendation two, that staff is creating a traffic calming toolbox, potentially? Yes? Or do they want to create it?
Councilmember, I think we have on our wish list the creation of a traffic calming toolbox through our Streets for People Active Transportation Plan, that is currently doing community engagement right now. If you have not participated, I encourage everybody to do that. We're going to be developing a toolkit that we can use, and my understanding is that we'll collaborate with traffic engineering on that for ensuring its implementability.
Thank you. And then on, I appreciate you updating on the status, and thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for asking what the status of the construction detour policy, because we have deaths downtown, which is personal to me, and the faster we move this with still public input, would greatly appreciate it. In recommendation eight, increased bike parking, I am fully supportive, and I hope the city also, JIB, the North Natomas Transportation Management Association, like, I've partnered to help pay for increased bike parking in some of our commercial corridors. So if there were any other incentives or grants to get that elsewhere in the city, I would love to see that.
Councilmember Kaplan, we have a small annual budget for bike parking. We generally install bike parking in the public right-of-way, which is a challenge for places like Natomas or older commercial corridors that are streets, narrow sidewalk, and private property. And so we're piloting our first ever pilot of bike parking on private property, on Intalic Village, in Council District Six, to see how we can work through the process of installing a couple of bike racks on an older strip mall that doesn't have it. And should this pilot work out well and going through the processes, we can see that expanding into areas where we don't have the public right-of-way to get those racks in, with the focus in underserved, under-resourced areas.
If you haven't spoken to Melissa Ming with JIB, we're already doing that in Natomas. So hope we can help work out some of the kinks to make it happen elsewhere in the city.
Wonderful, thank you.
And then just something for our active transportation commissioners. As I look through this report and recommendations for 2022, reviewing slowdown streets, traffic improvements, and connection trails, none actually apply to D1. Don't forget us, I hope that D1 is considered, because Arden, and, sorry, Del Paso is a hazard. It is a very fast thoroughfare. It is dangerous, and we have to find ways to slow it down, as well as Arena Boulevard. Would love to see some recommendations, because while D1 is new, it was still constructed during a car-centric era, and we need to have connections, especially since I grew up, when I bought my first house in South Natomas, riding my bike to downtown to work safely, and that route is no longer safe. So I know a lot of people in Natomas who work down here that would love to bike, so how we can do that and concentrate on working through D1 and D3, would love to see those recommendations come through the active transportation. Thank you.
Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. I have prepared extensive comments. I'm just kidding. No, my colleagues have done an amazing job, and I really just wanted to also say to Mayor Pro Tem Vang, thank you for always being very action-oriented. So yes, how do we hold ourselves accountable? How do we make sure that we're not just talking up here, because we sure like to do that, but also having action behind those words? So I really appreciate that, and I support your direction. And I just wanted to say, you know, I already spoke at length during our Climate Action Plan comments and during PNP E, and so just want to reiterate that active transportation, this is how we meet our climate goals. This is public safety, like, when we talk about that. When I got a call this weekend that we had three pedestrian fatalities in one night throughout the city of Sacramento, that really broke my heart. And that's just, you know, just another indicator of what we already know is true, that we're really one of the most unsafe cities to walk, bike, and get around. And I'm, you know, I personally experience this every day. I ride my bike, I literally almost got hit by a car in the intersection of Alhambra and Broadway like two days ago, and I had the right-of-way. So, you know, this is also our public health strategy, and this is our children's future. And so I support finding the recommendations, and I also really believe that we need to be prioritizing this in our budget. So my colleagues who are on Budget and Audit Committee, I hope that we, you know, that will be a robust discussion that we will have next year. So thank you for all of your work, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Lowey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Great report, thank you so much. Those nine items, I don't see how anyone could argue with any of those, but the budget does play a very important role, and $5 billion is quite a bit. So I completely agree, definitely supportive of these plans, how we get there and how we raise the funds. I know we're still in talks and kind of deciding on that action. But what I would like to ask is, meanwhile, if the active transportation can get together with maybe some of the other departments within our city, to make sure that all of our bike lanes are at least usable. I represent a district that unfortunately, as much as my, the residents in the district would like to use the bike lanes, they're not able to for safety reasons. And it would be great if, you know, yourself, you know, myself and you and other members or other staff, we can just ride along that bike path and find all the issues and see why is it that a good portion of our residents are too concerned about riding those bike lanes? So that's not going to require immediate fund. At least we can probably, if we can address some of those issues, that would be wonderful. You know, the speed management program, I think it's a great idea. I know that we need speed bumps. I'm told that each district is allocated two speed bumps a year for budgetary reasons, obviously. But while we're waiting for that, what else can we do to minimize the speed on some of these side streets, whether it's signage or something that, you know, it's not going to be too expensive? So I would love to get some feedback on that. Yeah, I mean, those are my two major concerns. You know, we have bike lanes that are not being utilized, and it would be great to get some feedback from your department to see what needs to be done, and if we can get that sooner than later, because as I said, it's been about a year and a half, almost two years, that the residents are complaining that they're not, they cannot use the bike lanes for safety reasons. So your input would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
All right. So to members of the public, I am the last speaker on this item.
I might speak.
Oh, just kidding, okay. The mayor's the last speaker. I just want to give kudos to the Active Transportation Committee Commission and to our staff for working hard on this, and especially to our District Three Commissioner, Don Gibson, who went around to our neighborhood associations and taught everybody how to use Streets for People, and how to log in where the incident happened, how to follow up, and how to use it, just because that accessibility is important. I'd love to see comments from the Disabilities Commission incorporated into this for the futures, for those that have mobility issues, using walkers, wheelchairs, and scooters. Other than that, I mean, keep up the good work. I know, like Councilmember Kaplan said, we have JIB in Natomas who continues to do this work with you, and I know you guys have a really strong relationship. So thank you for your support, and looking forward to seeing what comes out of this with budget allocations.
Thank you. Very briefly, I just, first of all, thank you so much for your hard work, Commissioner. I mean, really, it's so meaningful, and I loved what Isaac Gonzalez said about, I don't recall, you know, 25 members of the public coming or calling in to talk about transportation issues. And usually, people come here to talk about homelessness. And so it really says something, and about the potential organizing ability that you have, that we have, to actually get the money. And, because that is what it's about. Every time we talk about climate, every time we talk about active transportation, we really are talking about what is it going to take to come up with the local matches for all the state and federal money that is out there and available to fund some of these life and death projects? And so appreciated, Councilmember Valenzuela, mentioning the fact that last Friday, I had the privilege of giving my third, third State of the City address, as I joke, my third of six speeches, but no more, no more for at least a year. My third, where I did lay out what I thought was a very hopeful vision, and a more hopeful vision for how we pass a countywide transportation housing measure in 2024. And of course, a key component of it is active transportation and safe streets. That's the third pot, the third category. $9 billion divided by three, that could be potentially $3 billion countywide. And, you know, I also said in a little bit derisively, and not in a way that was a criticism of anybody who works here, because we have an incredibly dedicated team, but why should Jennifer Donlin White and Jennifer Venema and everyone else have to spend their time filling out grant applications? I just, I don't get it. That's not what, that is not what a great city, or a city that aspires to greatness, should have to do, you know, to hope that you get a little bit of the match, there won't be enough of the match, to maybe induce the state, the government to say, yes. No, we need to be in this in a real way, and that means going to the voters ultimately, and trying to recast what we have tried in the past and not been successful at doing, but with a different focus, a climate focus, a housing focus, an active transportation focus. And believe me, that speech was not just a speech. Already followed up, Supervisor Desmond, Mayor Singh Allen, and some of the others, and Vice Mayor Geta, and, you know, with the STA, and we're going to really see if we can put something together here, because I want you to come here in two years, when I'm no longer here, and I want you to say, oh my, look at all of the, look at all of the resources we now have to compete, that we have to compete for at the local level, and, and no more, and no more grant applications, or at least not as many, because we need to support you and the work you're doing, and all of you even more. So let's take this, let's organize around it, and let's do something great at the ballot as soon as we can. Thank you. All right. Mayor Pro Tem Vang's direction is included.
Yes, what I'm going to do, because I know we have no council log, I'm going to work on a council proposal with, and just submit it, to put it in the log, so that it can go to budget and audit, so just wanted to put that on record. So I think me and Valenzuela will work on just a simple proposal, submit it to budget and audit for next steps.
And I'll talk to the mayor about referring it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor, before we move on, can we go back to the consent calendar?
We did not pass the consent calendar at a respect for Councilmember Talamontes. Yes, thank you for reminding. All in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining. The consent calendar passes. Thank you, all the members of the public and the commission. Give them a hand, come on. We now move to item 12, which is the North Natomas Community Facilities District. I hope this will be relatively brief tonight. Councilmember Kaplan, is it? Councilmember Kaplan, is it? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Claudia Lara and I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm a analyst with the City Treasurer's Office. I'm here to discuss the issuance of the North Natoma CFD-IV Series G 2023. A quick overview of the North Natoma CFD-IV, as you can see, it's located in the upper east, northeast of Sacramento in the Natomas area. It is, it does consist of four different tax zones. There's tax zone 1A, 1B, tax zone 2 and tax, tax zone 4. The North Natoma CFD currently on, on display, the numbers that we show is information from last year because currently we are in the middle of levy and that information is not necessarily available. But the, because it is a CFD that is well-formed already, there's really not much change between last year to this year. As you can see, there's 8,962 parcels, which are classified as developed and all those parcels are also taxable. Tax zones 1A, 2 and 4, they're, it's fully formed. Tax zone 1B is the only tax zone that currently there's six parcels that are under classified as developable parcels. The issuance of the Series G bonds is simply just to refinance the Series E bond that was issued back in 2013. The outstanding debt service, which is from 9/1/2024 through 9/1/2033. The Series G bonds are estimated to generate a net present value savings of 1.6 million, a total cash flow savings of 3.4 million. The flow of funds, you know, within the district, there are the special tax revenues, which is the funds collected from the property owners that pay their special tax, which then is transferred over to a special tax fund held within the city. Within the, the fund, the debt service payments are paid on, prior to the March 1 and September debt service payments. By doing that, we transfer the allocated amount to the trustee who then turns and pays the bonds. Also, within the special tax fund, we have the bond reserve fund and as well as pay the expense allocated to continue the, the district. Any, any excess then falls down to the community facilities fund of which can be used for the following tax year. Key highlights of the bond issuance, the payment of the Series G 2023 bonds have no impact on general fund as it is solely paid by property owners that pay, pay that special tax. The city is also part of the county's teeter plan, which means that if there are any delinquencies within the CFD-IV, the county goes ahead and pay, provide those funds over to the city and then they are in charge of collecting the funds for themselves. In the event, there, there is a specific parcel that is not covered for a teeter plan during, sorry, through the teeter plan, or it meets a qualification for the, under the foreclosure covenants, the City Treasurer's Office does have a concise process in order to follow and make sure that the foreclosure covenants are met. And that includes completing a lien against the property. Savings per parcel ranges $25 to $45 a year, depending on the tax zone, the parcel through fiscal year 2034. It might not seem a lot per parcel, but in the gist of everything, total cash flow savings does come out to be 3.4 million through fiscal year 2034. Thank you. If anybody has any questions, I'm available.
Do we, do we have public testimony?
Mayor, I have no comment on this item.
Thank you so much for a good presentation. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Kaplan from the district here.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Any opportunity to save taxpayer dollars is a fabulous thing. So I want to say thank you for the staff to be cognizant and aware of when we can refinance. It's something often done with school bonds, so very familiar in doing this. While it might not seem a little, over the course of 10, 11 years, it will add up. And then just on the record, because it does matter when you do refinancing, you have to, as the council member for this area, confirm that I have no pending felony or criminal charges up against, because you are asked these questions, and I have not been subject to any SEC order or investigation. It is required as part of when they're looking at refinancing that the council member representing that area is in good standing order. So I just want to say I'm in good standing order and I'd like to move the item.
What a relief. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed abstain. Well, I'm sorry. Second, okay. Oh, there were people up. You, well, why don't you make a comment now after the fact?
I just wanted to ask Claudia if she just did that by memory.
Kind of, yes.
That was impressive. So I just wanted to say that. You really understand your staff because that takes a lot to do, so just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. Karina, did you want to say something? Okay, okay.
It appears I have three hands raised to make comment on this item now.
What did I do? But you said there was.
So I said there was no public comment, so I'm assuming these are for the following item.
For the following item. Okay, so let's get to the following item. This is item 12 and I want to turn it over.
13.
Excuse me, I'm 13. I want to turn it over for a moment to the city manager, then I would like to make a comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, I'd like to amend staff's recommendation for item 13. And on behalf of all the charter officers and the point of officers, Dr. Watson, I'd like to continue the items contained within this report to a later date that's related to all the salary adjustments for the charter officers and again, point of officers. And I just want to make that adjustment. Aaron Donato still has to do a presentation for the balance of the item, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
We'll take, we'll take that as a friendly amendment when, when Aaron comes up, but I'd like to make a statement because, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth on these issues. And I want to say that first about, to all of our charter officers in this city, it is true that the charter officers in this city are the highest paid employees in the city and it's also true that they have positions of high responsibility. They, excuse me? They work incredibly hard and they have a tremendous amount of responsibility where something doesn't go right, it's there. The buck stops with all of the charter officers. And so the city manager just made a decision, and his decision, his decision to continue the item regarding the charter officers, including potential salary adjustments. And in my view, and I don't want to overstate this, but I just want to say my opinion as mayor, that what we just witnessed was an act of leadership. This was the city manager's decision. He has every right, as do all the charter officers, to fight for himself. In this case, the city manager to fight for himself and his family. He's an incredibly effective city manager who, who works seven days a week. He was named City Manager of the Year in California, a very high honor just recently. And he obviously loves this city. Would have been a debate tonight. I believe that his request would have prevailed. But here's the fact, we are behind, it's true, on our charter officer's evaluation and compensation process, in part because for years, even preceding my mayorship, it's all been done really, really pretty much informally. And with the help of Councilmember Kaplan, the Chair of the PNP Committee, we're going to formalize it. And we're going to have a standardized process for valuation of not just the city manager, but all of the charter officers and make the compensation decisions with some scale or some standardized process. It's also true that we are behind with all of our unions in the collective bargaining process. And, you know, I know one of the things the council feels strongly about, we're talking about this, is that going forward, we need to start earlier so that by the time we get to the deadline date, we, we in fact have made greater progress. Now, not interfering in any way, I just want to say when it comes to police and fire, we're going to get there. I know it. I know we're going to get there. We are. But here is, I think, the significance of what the city manager said a moment ago and how I interpret it as mayor of this city. His decision tonight to put off any consideration of his compensation or any other charter officer's compensation is a statement that we're going to care, take care of our lowest paid workers before they consider themselves. And I think that's right and I think that's leadership. Let's go now to the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Aaron Donato, your Labor Relations Manager. I'm standing in for the Human Resources Director, Shelley Banks-Robinson, tonight. As you are all aware, California Government Code Section 54953 requires us to read into the record executive level salaries. However, based on the commentary here, it appears that that is unnecessary tonight. There is still some items in this package, item number 13, that we would request that you consider for a vote, including some interns, intern items in the city attorney's office as well. With that, that concludes my report. I have nothing, nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have public testimony on the item?
Yes, Mayor, I have three in chambers. The first is Timothy Davis, then O, then MVW.
I had stuff really good here to talk about, but with the change, I want to change kind of what I was saying. But the importance here, I think, is the message that was going to be sent today is that the city was setting two different standards for its employees. Employees in the highest echelon of management were being offered extraordinary salaries to ensure the city retains and values those employees, while the rest of its employees...
Tim, you're welcome. Tim, excuse, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You can say of course whatever you want, but it's changed.
Yes.
And so I think.
Yes.
I take that cue.
Yeah. We're, it's been a long time. Our contract expired in March. My members are frustrated. I'm not the only union that feels the same way. We need to see some resolution and the council has only met twice in the last six months to discuss bargaining with all of its members, all of the, the labor unions in the city. And I'm glad that this item has been pulled to move forward because we need to focus first on our rank and file employees, getting them under contract, and then we can talk about getting everybody else taken care of. And I, I wasn't coming to speak against the salary increases. I think they just set the bar for everyone else. And we are struggling to retain all of our employees in the city. We are, you know, we're paying them below market and we can't do that anymore. Our police department, we can't hire people. Our comm center is struggling, almost 50% vacancy in our comm center. The only reason they all haven't left yet is because their job applications haven't been accepted by other cities. So we need to make sure that we set our salaries in a way that we value our employees, that we can retain those employees and that we can do the job that we have here as a city. We are completely understaffed and across the board in all the different departments in the city, but those in the police department, we're struggling and we need to get a contract so that we can retain our employees.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is O and then MVW. And I want to point to the timer on the top right of the screen. It's not working right now.
Howard Chan walks around with the same non-accountability and immunity the police officers in this city get, which is no wonder why anytime SACPD has asked this, this council for something, Howard Chan makes sure they get it. Again, let's remember Howard Chan is a hired employee, not an elected official, yet Howard holds all the power in this city in his hands. He oversees homelessness, SACPD, the fire department and more. It's way too much power for any one man to have, especially a man that the Sacramento people didn't choose or vote in. It's been made very clear that most of the votes in this council are controlled by Howard and if you are a council member who doesn't kiss his ass, good luck making any changes you want to see in this city. It's obvious after being in here with y'all for 22 weeks that you have put Howard on an untouchable pedestal. Y'all can't even talk about certain things in public forums, especially when it comes to transparency, without him getting upset and the mayor coming to his defense. Since Howard Chan has been city manager, the issues in our city have skyrocketed. He prioritizes the interests of police officers, business owners, landlords and rich folks over black, brown and poor communities where poverty and death has only increased. Howard Chan is responsible for death after death after death. He might as well be the Grim Reaper of Sacramento. I've been a manager, I've had staff and I know that if things at my job are getting worse, there's no way I should expect a raise, let alone be able to keep my job. When you look at the condition of our city, nothing about it says Howard deserves a raise. What it does say is this council needs to step up and fire him.
Thank you for your comments. MVW.
Howard S. Chan, who apparently can't stand to hear a little bit of opposition in the room, has been Sacramento City Manager since 2017. Howard even won City Manager of the Year last year. Howard's position is appointed, not elected. Since Howard was placed into his position by Daryl, the unhoused population has quadrupled. Nearly 600 people have died on Sacramento streets under Howard's regime. Howard refuses to open respite shelters, saving lives and weather, even though he knows that the winter gets really windy and wet and the summer gets really hot. Yesterday, we lost Mario Martin, a 41-year-old who died on North B Street. On Sunday, we lost Kevin Kraft, a 60-year-old man who died on 5th Street. Every two days, an unhoused person dies in Sacramento because of Howard's regime. Howard also refuses to fire murderous SACPD officers. Stefan Clark was murdered by SACPD and those officers still have their job. Brandon Smith was murdered by SACPD and those officers still have their job. Dale Richards, a 19-year-old Asian boy, was murdered by SACPD and those officers still have their job. As the king of Sacramento, Howard's power is unlimited and overreaching. Howard even threatened to vacate his position in an open session, his last pay increase if it wasn't approved. In 2022, Howard's total wages hit $547,905. He cashed out his vacation and leave time. He earned about $130,000 more in total wages than Sacramento County Executive Ann Edwards, who oversees $7 billion, roughly to the $1.5 million. Howard makes more money than the mayor, the governor and even the President of the fucking United States. What are you doing giving him another pay increase? Are you guys serious?
Your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi. I have eight speakers online.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Fantastic. Mayor Steinberg, you, you said earlier in your comments that the buck stops with the, these employees, including Howard Chan and, you know, pardon my French, but that's a load of horse shit. It, you know, it doesn't seem like the buck's ever stopped with Howard Chan. You've given him three raises in the last couple of years, but I have yet to see a single instance of the city council holding him accountable for something. I'd love to hear a counter example. It certainly hasn't happened publicly to my knowledge, but if you want to, you know, give me some examples where he's been held accountable for his mismanagement of the city, please by all means let me know. But I think that if the buck truly stopped there, we'd be talking about firing him rather than giving him a raise. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Rodriguez. Rodriguez, will you unmute?
Hi, yes. I represent two local neighborhood groups on Facebook. Number one is All Eyes on Deck for District Number Two and number two is Safe and Clean Del Paso Heights. And we strongly oppose salary increases for all city employees. And we strongly oppose salary increases for all city employees, because if this was the private sector, for any employee to get a pay raise, you would have to show performance to your boss. And, and I would propose that, that the city take this to the voters, and I would guarantee that the voters would vote down any pay increase all the time. And so, and so, and once again, if this was the private sector, the boss of the company would say, no, never. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Willie Murphy. Willie Murphy, if you'll unmute. I'm gonna go to the next speaker, Keon Bliss.
Quite the savvy political move. That was, uh, done. Well done. Everybody that previously spoke is, is quite on the money with how bad this would have looked if council was approving the third pay increase for the highest-paid city employee in the state, when it comes to regular pay especially. So just some, a few numbers just to lay out there as you all and the rest of the city consider this after the labor negotiations. That's how much the city manager made in regular base pay just in 2022, according to public records. And according to those records available, that is the highest regular pay for a city manager out of 457 cities they employ. That includes, like, cities like LA that has a population of over 9 million people. That's how much total pay Howard Chan took home in 2022, when you include the additional pay and bonuses and other compensation that are... And this is all before the generous benefits that the city pays to the city manager and other employees at our taxpayer expense. When you add up the $59,405,000 in health and retirement benefits and the prorated $44,777,000 cost of pension debt payments that the city made, that accrues to about $652,875.6 in total pay and benefits that the city manager has taken just in 2022. So the idea of giving a third pay raise, you can call it a cost-of-living adjustment all you want to the rest of us that are, have, will never hope to really see...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Willie Murphy. Willie, if you can unmute. Willie Murphy. I'm gonna go to the next speaker, Chris Paulhaus. Chris Paulhaus.
Yes, I can hear you.
Please proceed.
GTVFlyers.com is a great place to know about the Jews, their baby penis-sucking vampires.
If you have something on...
You're out.
Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on items that swing the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Please proceed if you have comments within the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento. Thank you. Stand Up Sacramento is the next speaker. Stand Up Sacramento, if you'll unmute. I'm gonna go to the next speaker, Sean Lutis. Sean Lutis.
Can you hear me?
You can, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, I just, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I'd like to take a little time to praise our brave men and women in the Sacramento police force. You know, we depend on them for the safety, and I think they all deserve raises, and personally, like, I think they, they need some sort of, like, maybe like a monetary bonus or incentive for, like, every, every savage nigger that they decide to kill on the street takes everything...
Cut him off! Cut him off! Cut him off! Cut him off! Be quiet! Cut him off! Be quiet! Cut him off! Cut him off! Cut him off!
Jim Atkinson? Jim Atkinson?
Yes, hello. Yes, hello.
Please proceed.
Is this one of them?
Yes, we will never surrender to the Zionist pigs. 1488, Mayor, you're a faggot piece of shit commie bastard.
Turn him off! Cut him off! We're not having that kind of profanity in the chambers. Done. Any of you who are gonna call and spew hate, the city clerk at my direction and the direction of the council are gonna cut you off right away. End of story. We're not having it in our chamber, and that's what we do consistently. The term... You can leave too. All right. Members, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the personnel resolution covering unrepresented officers and employees and approval of the citywide salary schedule that relates to those items.
Very good. Is there a second? Second. What's that? As amended, of course. All, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that measure passes. That concludes the agenda for this evening. Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I have 11 speakers in chambers. The first is Ryan Misano, Julius Guiles, Twikanda Groh.
Same on you guys. Three people were just killed by a Nazi, and you allow them to speak in our city. Same on all of you. Who have power?
So Ryan Misano is our first speaker.
Excuse me, ma'am. Ryan Misano, and then who?
Would you like, would you like to allow this woman to go first?
Okay, very good.
Twikanda?
Madam Clerk, can you read the next three speakers?
After Twikanda, Ryan Misano, Julius Guiles, then Daniel Savala. Please proceed.
Label considered and called violent, dirty, mental drug addict thieves. Born and exiled in our own country, we have no place to use the restroom, put our trash, no place to call home. Living homeless in the neighborhood where I grew up, I noticed, I have noticed, since the borders have been open, none of the liquor stores, smoke shop, gas stations, grocery stores, restaurants, and our construction jobs hire no one of color. And for me, myself being a woman, homeless, I have been raped in my sleep, robbed, I deal with domestic violence, and I have a monthly cycle. In four years, I have been homeless. So many women, some friends have been murdered waiting on help to be housed. I have been through all these so-called programs to help the homeless. Sacramento has came and took five trailers of mine, and this, this last time, they took everything, even one of my cats that was in the trailer. My art, food, clothes, underwear, no safety, no privacy. I am more than just a homeless, I'm more than just homeless. I am a mother, a grandmother, a artist, I am a human being. Why can't I also have a safe place to live and raise my grandchildren, and a place to take care of my son dying in the hospital as we speak?
Thank you for your comments. Ryan Misano, Julius Guiles.
Is the time gonna start?
Please restart the timer. Apologize for having timer difficulties. I will use the timer. There we go. Please proceed.
Truth sounds like hate to those who hate truth. 2 Samuel 23:3 says, "King David tells us, 'He that ruleth over men must be just ruling in the fear of God.'" Does that describe any of the city council or the mayor? I appreciate those who actually have the dignity to pay attention. That's quite respectful. Let's talk about a key component about justice. It means giving each citizen their First Amendment rights, which were given them by God. I was shocked speechless over the last few weeks to watch young 20-somethings come up and plead with the mayor and city clerk to deprive those of us they disagreed of with our, of our First Amendment rights, and the mayor ought to know better, but he simply listened and tried to agree with them. It's disgraceful. Frederick Douglass said, "Liberty is meaningless where the right to utter one's thoughts and opinions has ceased to exist. That of all rights is the dread of tyrants. It is the right which they first of all strike down. They know its power. Thrones, dominions, principalities, and powers founded in injustice and wrong are sure to tremble if men are allowed to reason. Equally clear is the right to hear. To suppress free speech is a double wrong. It violates the rights of the hearer as well as those of the speaker." As for our "not in our jurisdiction" trick the mayor and city council used to try to limit criticism, it's unjust that Twitter and Facebook, arguably the two biggest political forums in America, and they censor. They shape citizens' minds, and we are supposed to take these opinions seriously. Only a fool listens to television, radio, newspapers, Facebook, and Twitter and the rest of the controlled information. The actions of this mayor and city council to limit speech are dangerous attacks, and they are aided by many citizens who have no serious comprehension of history. This is how authoritarian governments take hold. Government slanders and libels citizens and first silences them. First, their speech is exterminated, then they are exterminated. For a man, if a man cannot speak soon, his ability to live is endangered by mobs and bullies too.
Thank you for your comments. Julius Guiles, then Daniel Savala.
Is it this mic? Yeah. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Before I read my speech, I think it's disgraceful to watch people spin their chairs around and not pay attention to the people that actually have concerns. I think that's very cowardly, and you guys should not be holding government positions. Therefore, I'm gonna go on my speech. This is to Mayor Steinberg, although he's not here, another coward. We are Americans who have the right to free speech regardless of what side of the aisle you stand on. Censoring speech you disagree with is unconstitutional. I witnessed what happened to a fellow American who called in to express his concern on the state of, on the state of our country and the weakness of the mayor's position, who, by the way, this American citizen right here did not use profanity and does not spew hate nor rely. But I think the mayor is a coward who claims to want civil discourse unless it goes against what he believes in. If the mayor or any of you who thinks like him cannot handle a person who calls in or in person expresses themselves, you guys should not be holding the position that you guys have. I truly hope you take what I say to consideration, and you allow all Americans to speak their peace without censorship. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you for your comments. Daniel Savala, then Kyle Williams, then Cherie Gordon.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and Council. It's really tough for me to come here sometimes because I know how hard everyone's working, and I know, and I've worked in the city of Sacramento before, and so coming here as a critic, you know, I want you to know that I first and foremost come here because I love my city. I love the neighborhood that I live in. Tonight, I want to talk about code enforcement, something that, and I don't want to point out any one code enforcement officer or, or the director, but I just think we have a fundamental problem with what code enforcement, what code enforcement actually does in our city. And it's incredibly hard for them, I get that. They're being pulled in multiple directions. We want enforcement, we don't want enforcement. There's some sensitive issues sometimes that come up, and there needs to be a little more diligence in certain areas. But I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated because down my block, I've got multiple code enforcement cases that I put in personally that get closed unfounded. As the Director for the Business District for Del Paso Boulevard, I've been here many times asking for the city to address the vacant building ordinance, which has yet to be done. I have code enforcement cases that get closed because of just ugly signage up and down the boulevard. It's still an issue now. But over the weekend, the North Sacramento-Del Paso Boulevard music series at King Kong Brewery was issued a $1,000 citation, provided evidence to staff that it's a PBS-sponsored event, we pay for the entertainment. My Chairman of the Board, Rob Kerth, was there in attendance, sent a really respectful email to staff and told them my rationale. They doubled down and said, no, that's not the case, they didn't have enough evidence and further, that because trivia night happens, that $10,000 fan is gonna stand. I don't think any of you would like that happening in your district.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kyle Williams. After Kyle is Cherie Gordon, then MVW.
I have possibly not a popular topic for some, I don't know, but I kind of wanted to just bring it up. I have a plan to be here until I see things go to normal, like people come in here, not on the streets, sleeping and so forth. So anyway, masculinity, I want to talk about it. We're lacking it, and I want to maybe share with you why. It seems overly simplified, but I think it might help some of you. And again, I believe we need men and women to solve all problems, but we have a, an abundance of the left right now. Again, this room, I think, is completely left-leaning. There might be somebody here that's centristic. So my left hand represents women, my right hand represents men. It would be nice to see men and women like this, equal, right? Sometimes a woman's in charge, sometimes a man in charge. Well, back in 1940, do you remember the women were down here, ladies? We all do. My mom told me all about it. 1930, 1950 even, and men were up here. And this was a complaint, and the feminist movement kicked in, and then we moved up. About the 70s, 80s, and 90s, we actually became about equal. Well, then, a certain level of women have kept going, so now you've got fourth and fifth level feminist women up here, and men are down here. I'm not worried about me, I'm not worried about most of my buddies, but what is happening is that we have an unequal scenario again. This didn't work, did it, ladies, when the women were down here in the 40s and the men were up here? Well, it's not working now with women up here and men down here. So whatever we could do to bring back masculinity to our city, particularly cities, you find more masculinity in the country, would sure help, including independents and Republicans showing up in this room and ending up on this board. Thank you very much for considering.
Thank you for your comments. Cherie Gordon. Following Cherie, I believe MVW and O. have left, so it will be Ron Elmsley.
Good morning, Ms. Gordon. Good evening, Ms. Gordon.
Good morning, or good afternoon, good night. Before, two weeks ago, the last year I addressed the council was in 1997. At that time, a citizen was allocated three minutes to speak before the council. Now it's two. So we are now witnessing a slow erosion of democracy. I'm sure in the near future, it will be one minute that we are allocated. I really don't think that the city is too interested, especially with disgruntled constituents hearing from us. But also in 1997, I warned and I predicted Hammondvilles appearing in Oak Park. But now, many parts of the city look like Steinbergvilles, a euphemism for Hoovervilles of the 1930s. Blight is cropping up in all parts of the city because of a lack of enforcement of city laws. I, for one, am sick and tired of Mr. Steinberg passing the buck and pointing his finger at Mr. Ho for not enforcing and removing homeless camps and the misdemeanors that go unforced. I am aware of Troy L. Nunley's appellate ruling. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke about the blighted area at 20th and 52nd Street. Right now, a motorist is unable to turn north onto Stockton Boulevard because of the blight.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ron Elmsley, then Rev., then Dimitri. I have three more speakers, Ron Elmsley, Rev., then Dimitri, and then I have 10 callers I don't see Ron. Rev.?
Mr. Elmsley is trying to get to the podium here.
Hold your horses.
Hold your horses.
Okay. This is blight in Oak Park. This is made with sawdust and glue.
And they got a little vinyl on the outside. This is the projects. I tried to reach my, with the photos, I tried to reach my city councilperson that indicated that her door would always be open. There was never a response. Here's a little bit further down. I think it's a little bit west of that other one. See the big gaps? All this stuff, it looks like it's fungus a little. This is a faraway shot. All of that in there is buckling when it meets the dormer. And then look at all this crap. And here's more. You can see it really good here where it's sticking out and all of this is split. And I think this is the last one. It just looks like dog shit. Now, that's legal because government entities that have their own inspectors don't have to conform to what private individuals have to conform to. That's a double standard. Can you blow this up a little, Mindy? Please? No, you gotta get it up. Hold the clock! Can you blow it up? More! You can push the kill button, but you can't respond to this. Okay. About time. Okay, what this says is if you're a private landlord...
Your time is complete.
No, it's not!
Rev is our next speaker.
Hey!
Your time is complete.
No, it's not!
Please have a seat.
Your time is complete, sir. Your time is complete, you may leave the chambers.
No, it's not! She took her time getting it over. She fumbled, but she's got her...
Please, you have exceeded your speaking time. Please stop speaking and take your seat.
Mr. Elmsley, take your seat or you'll be asked to leave.
I'll leave.
Thank you.
You gotta do something with Mindy because she's out for lunch.
Rev is our next speaker.
No wonder the city's all fucked up.
Call the next speaker. Thank you. Mr. Elmsley, you can leave.
Let him get your heartache. It's not worth that because I don't give mouth to mouth. Hi, folks. I have a very touching area that hit me. A Brandon Richard Waite was murdered from a hit-and-run accident right over here on Rail, isn't that Rail Yard Boulevard that's right up in here? The new street they got? That's actually my stepson. He was on his way basically to change his life, go back to his mother's home. And I just want to have everybody with the expressions on your face. Because this young man meant a lot to me. I've known him ever since he was three and he died at 40. And just knowing the test trial and tribulation he had to deal with in life is things that I'm used to in common with my homeless folks, but I didn't expect to know that my grandson would be, I mean, my stepson would be run over. As I went over there to check out the area, I noticed they got like three lights that don't turn red. If you got lights in the city that don't ever turn red, you're gonna have a whole bunch of collisions in this midtown area, correct? Can I get a hit? Yeah. So therefore, everybody speeding them down the street while we had to wait the other day, and I'm like, "Why's all this car going through?" And I ain't paying attention, and it never changed, and so I drove away. And I'm looking in my rearview mirror and I'm talking to my son, which he lost his brother, that's his oldest brother and the only one. So I'm looking in the mirror, like, "Look, those lights haven't changed." So I went back over there and investigated the other day. And sure enough, I sat there for like 40 minutes, car whoosh. So I can imagine when the nights when you have this little Arco or Golden One Arena stuff going on, they gotta get out of the city, they know that street's a good one to get out of. So how many people have been hit and ran over and killed over there and not been known? It didn't hit the regular news, but it hit some safety news? It wasn't, that's not good. Shows that my homeless people are just like out there walking dead men. John Does and Jane Does, as I called them years ago. Like make sure that you got somebody in your life that knows you, other than that, the city will get away with scraping you up under the dust. God bless you all. And I'm gonna fight this.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dimitri. And then I have 10 callers online.
Evening, Council. First time doing this, so hello. I was asked to come up here and give a bit of a story and I guess you could sum it up. I am airing a bit of a grievance. So we've got a project in the North Sacramento area. We had a boom truck sitting on our parking lot and, as many of you know, it's, there's security issues. We moved that boom truck to the alleyway behind the building. And unfortunately, code enforcement came out and we met them that day. We notified them, "Hey, this is our vehicle, we don't have the keys, it's one of our contractor's vehicles." And the response that we got was, "We're here now, so we're gonna tow it." And this is actually after, you know, Daniel over here, the PBID Director, made some phone calls and still nothing, nothing happened. Then ended up towing it, contractor ended up losing the truck for any number of reasons. I'm airing this because when I have a story like this, and there are quite a few, and then I do, you know, I drive down Broadway every day going to Cap City and coming back, and I see a lot of these folks, you know, and they're literally chopping up bikes, stolen bikes clearly, they're spray painting them, this is all under the bridge, we all know where we're talking about in Alhambra. It's starting to feel that, hey, the burden's on the business, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take what we can from you. And that contract between us and government is really, it's really starting to get a little, a little uneven right now and a little bit unfair. And so what I was trying to follow up here on what Dana was saying was, one, the code enforcement issue was just a slap in the face saying, "We're here now." Like, "We're telling you it's our vehicle, we moved it because of a security risk." And the response we get is literally verbatim, "We're here now, so we're gonna tow it." I don't think that should be an acceptable response when somebody's standing there saying, "Hey, like, this is the vehicle, you've got five, 10 other vehicles in other alleys nobody's speaking up for." And really, I just wanted to say, that's not a great story and a reflection on city personnel here.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, we're gonna have Assistant City Manager Mario Lara speak with this gentleman.
Next speaker is Sasha Abrahamsky. Sasha, if you'll unmute.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so I live at the Mill Complex. There's been an abandoned warehouse there which has been a fire hazard for years. My neighbors in the Mill Complex and in the public housing developments nearby, we have all complained about this for years and said it will keep burning up, and it does. It's burnt up over a dozen times in the last few years, three times in the last year alone. There's a huge homeless encampment there with open fires. My neighbors and I kept saying, "Please move this because we're gonna have an environmental disaster." The last fire spewed a huge amount of asbestos over the region. There were then signs put up saying asbestos warning. The homeless encampment was left in place despite our repeated request to remove it. Last week, there was another absolutely enormous fire. And at the end of that, there was toxic ash all over our neighborhoods. At that point, the buildings were demolished, but the city has not permitted the removal of the debris. So if you come onto Fifth Avenue and First Street, there is now a pile about quarter to half an acre in size of toxic, stinking debris that has just been left in our neighborhood by the city. Now, I realize there's a huge problem with the unhoused population and I realize the city is trying to find places to house people. But the result is terribly dangerous for residents, it's terribly dangerous for the unhoused population who are still living in the debris a week after the fire, and it's dangerous for the broader community. Now, we have sought redress from the city, we have sought redress from the Department of Toxic Substance Controls, we've sought redress from our city councilors, and nobody has done anything. And it feels like the entire neighborhood has been abandoned to toxicity. So I'm requesting, on behalf of myself and my neighbors, that the city council, including our council member Valenzuela, actually pay his attention to this toxic site and clears it up before more people get damaged because it's dangerous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is call-in user two.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis. And I tried, I had my hand up regarding number 13, but it got hectic down the stretch and so maybe I was missed. But it, I have to send a shout out to the people who put the microscope of scrutiny on Howard Chan because he has, to me, he's allowed to disregard his basic duties. Like tonight, just before public comments, "I'm the only one in the city that puts this out there," it says city manager's report. If he's making whatever they said, $500,000, $600,000, and has five assistant city managers, the public deserves to hear that city manager's report. Not blurting out, "I'll just move the agenda." I read where people are making, city workers are making between $45 and $216 an hour to put that agenda together. It's as though the city would rather be hit with a lawsuit than to deal with Howard Chan's neglect of giving us that city manager's report. And I want to say to Mr. LaLolli that our cheesecakes have gone viral in your district and we haven't heard from you. You're the one that said we're gonna, that we are the best in the United States. You're the one that said you're gonna take us viral. We went viral without you. You should be calling me. You should be proud of a Grant Pacer alumni that has a cheesecake like that. Shout out to the people who have courage to speak actual facts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jamila Jones.
Hi, my name is Jamila Jones. Hi, Ms. Maple. I started from the W Street and Alhambra encampment. And I was wondering if, well, I was praying that you guys come up with a solution before we have to get tagged and moved and swept. We're trying not to get swept over here. We're trying, we're hoping you guys come with a safe ground solution with this lot over here or the one behind the Observer. We have nowhere else to go. And all we're asking for is a porta potty. And I will keep this contained and clean. You know, it's only a few of us over here, but we're tired of getting bounced around back and forth and you guys aren't doing nothing. You're supposed to come out here and meet with us, nobody ever showed up. And I sent you several emails telling you about how much we appreciate you over here in our community and all this. You haven't even done nothing for us. So we're trying to see what you can do. This lot's been empty forever. You guys, the neighbors are complaining about us being an eyesore right here and we was contained in this gated-in field right here and somebody was kept in charge of keeping it clean and keeping the trash thrown away. You guys sent somebody to pick up trash. We wouldn't be having a problem at all until we get our housing. Everything is filled up, all the shelters, all the Miller Park, everything is a waiting list. But we're just sitting here while this lot right here is sitting empty and it could be utilized by us and we won't be such an eyesore to the neighbors. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is TCL913. If you'll unmute. TCL, if you'll unmute.
Hello?
Please proceed.
My name is Shawana Chapman. Mr. Steinberg, we met a couple of years ago when you came to, over here on X Street. I'm with Jamila, I'm over here on Alhambra. This lot is empty. I believe that we should be able to go in that lot and it will be comfortable for us and we won't be an eyesore to people. And all homeless people aren't bad people. I work, I have a job, I go to work every day just like you guys do. I lost my daughter last year and I would just like to not keep being bumped around. I would just like to be somewhere where it's civil until I can get into a place. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jay.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jay and I live in District 5. I'm here to talk about an encampment on W and Alhambra. A few people just spoke from there. I've been volunteering and doing advocacy with encampments in Sacramento for the last eight or nine months. I got involved with Camp Resolution when the city was planning a sweep of them. We are here in similar set of circumstances. There are 12 or so people residing in this encampment at W and Alhambra. They are unified, they are community, they are from Oak Park, they have always lived here, they have stayed together through multiple sweeps. Howard, I ask you, Howard Chan, to not sweep the encampment on Alhambra and W. They will always stay together, but they don't know where they would go. Please don't sweep them and give the community and the city a chance to work towards a solution, a place where people can be secure until real housing solutions exist. I want you in leadership and you, Howard Chan, to recognize this as an opportunity to create a safe ground with the support of the advocates, volunteers, housed and unhoused residents that fits the needs of this encampment. Howard has been granted the authority to identify safe ground sites. I see this as an opportunity to take a step forwards in your plans to develop these sites with the community collaboration and support. The city has used the terms service resistant to describe homeless population when in reality people are exercising their right to self-determination. Through your engagement in this collaborative process, I would expect better results as the residents of this encampment would be involved in creating and agreeing to terms. While that process is underway, there is an immediate issue that should be addressed. The camp residents and housed neighbors all want a porta potty on site. I would ask the city to use this, its county partnership to direct the county to provide one. Trust me, I will be talking to the county, but a porta potty is something that we can work together on. And we just generally look forward to working together on a project like this, like something that we can, you know, we're not coming here with demands, we're coming here trying to work together. So I ask you to work with this encampment and with the neighborhood and advocate.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daryl. Daryl, if you'll unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hello?
Please proceed.
Hi, with the anniversary of 9/11 coming up, I just wanted to remind everyone that Jews did 9/11. Watch 911MissingLinks.com.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Scotty.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
So the corrupt mayor and city council continue to use a California government code to silence speech that they don't like, but California government code 549-54.3 only applies to agenda items, not public comment. This council is violating Title 18, U.S. Code, Section 242, 243, deprivation of rights under color of law. This is a serious crime. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves. I will be pursuing this. We are free to criticize anyone that we want. And the fact I have to sit through these meetings while you and the public spew anti-white rhetoric, but if we say Jew or speak positively of the white race, we get shut down.
Remind them that they must speak on contents and within the purview of...
This is, listen, you're not even listening. I'm speaking directly about the council. This is under your jurisdiction and I just told you that you're violating Title 18, Section 242, deprivation of rights under color of law. Your government code does not apply to public comment. Get that through your head. You wonder why so many of us are standing up and calling you out? Nobody on this council values the Constitution or American values in general because none of you even belong in our country in the first place. The Naturalization Act of 1790 was clear...
Admonish the caller to stay within the purview of the city.
Government Code, Section 549-54.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body, and the comments were not under the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento. Chris Hansen.
Yes, hello, this is Chris here, District 7. I have a flyer here I wanted to read that I saw, and I thought this is an interesting thing in the city. "We stand against pedophiles and groomers. Do you, join us today, stand up and say no to the pedo-groomer culture that has plagued our society and our country. Let your voice be heard."
Madam Clerk, admonish the caller here to stay within the purview of the city government. Please silence the speaker and admonish the caller.
Jews did 9/11.
Government Code, Section 549-54.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Please proceed if you have comments under the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento.
If the caller moves from within the jurisdiction, end the caller's time.
Every aspect of the media is Jewish. Go to GTV flyer...
End the caller's time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mac.
Ooh, good evening, Council. This is a hard one. Fuck these racists. I'm calling in regards to, oh, hi y'all, my name's...
If the caller moves from within the jurisdiction, end the caller's time.
All right. Every aspect of the media is Jewish. Go to GTV flyer.
End the caller's time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mac.
Ooh, good evening, council. This is a hard one. Fuck these racists. I'm calling in regards to, oh, hi y'all, my name is Mac, from Alhambra, and a community organizer, we're acquainted. I'm calling in support of the W Street encampment. You know, the truth is, is like, and I hear all of these neighbors, every single one of them, who've come in here today to say things, even though some of them are just mean and nasty, like enforcement, enforcement. Don't act like you all haven't actually been doing enforcement for years instead of building affordable housing and shelter and all of that. Like, that's why all of our money goes into enforcement, it's why we actually have no money for services or housing, is because we've like, now 37% of our, of our general fund goes to law enforcement and the enforcement and the, and so much more money goes into the sweeps itself. So I'm calling to hopefully catch maybe some of those ears and let folks know that the only solution from kicking people from corner to corner is to offer things like bathrooms, trash cans, is to offer things like a safe ground, a place to be, where therefore, wraparound services can come on site and be offered, whether that's substance use, whether that's mental health, whether that's other forms of human assistance payments. And so, there are human assistance services, not payments. And, but what you're hearing from W Street folks, a united camp on W Street in Alhambra, is that they would like a safe ground. They would like to work with the city, that they, that they don't want to be swept from corner to corner, that they don't, that they want to work, and they are in an email chain with Councilmember Maple and some of the neighbors to come up with a, with a solution that's collaborative. So yeah, we are asking that you direct Howard to not sweep this encampment and instead find some proposed safe ground sites for this community. And then in the meantime, use the city, the city-county agreement to get us bathrooms. We'll be...
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Albert. Albert, if you'll unmute.
Yes, hello.
Please proceed.
I'd like to say, start putting the American homeless over refugees, refugees. Every aspect of the media is Jewish and fuck you Steinberg or you Zionists.
Madam Clerk, end the caller's time and admonish him under the council rules and purviews of the local jurisdiction.
Thank you. Government Code Section 549-54.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Please proceed if you have comments under the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento.
If the caller moves out of the jurisdiction, end the caller's time, Madam Clerk.
Our rights trump your feelings. 1488.
End the caller's time, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. That concludes public comment for the day. I have comments and from the council, Councilmember Maple.
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple announcements. One is that this Thursday, I will be attending along with the Sacramento Air Quality Management District on a fuel cell energy tour in the city of Long Beach. So really excited to learn about that new technology. I know that that's something that you're working on as well, Vice Mayor, at the state level. And, you know, I think we have to be really creative about how we're, how and what we're getting our energy from. So excited to learn. And then, of course, Labor Day is coming up. And so I believe myself and many of my colleagues perhaps will be, will be volunteering at Loews and Fishes in the morning and then will be surreptitiously dunked into a tank for the Sacramento Central Labor Council Dunk Tank at Fairy Tale Town. So looking forward to that along with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Vang, Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
Thanks. I just wanted to make some quick announcement. This Saturday, September 2nd, from 4:30 to 7 o'clock at 24th Street Bypass Park, there will be a Supplies for Solidarity event hosted by the Reclamation Project at 916. This event is a community distribution event, providing free school supplies and other essentials to Sacramento students, teachers, and families. And so definitely encouraging folks to come out to that. Also wanted to share that next Saturday, save our Sacramento Alliance for Vaccine Equity. We've been meeting bi-weekly since the pandemic and we are launching our first annual Health and Wellness Fair. That's happening Saturday, September 9th, from 11 to 3 at Rosa Parks, K to 8. So really encouraging folks to come out to that. And then also to save the date for, this is October 21st, just a little ahead of time, but since my staff gave it to me, just want to put a plug right now. South SAC Festival is happening on Saturday, October 21st, from 11 to 3 at Shasta Park. And then I too also wanted to echo Councilwoman Maple, Monday is Labor Day and this weekend many families will be celebrating Labor Day. I do especially, I just want to do a shout out to all the workers in our city and everyone in the labor movement, especially those who are fighting to make a difference every day to ensure that workers and our families receive fair wages, good healthcare coverage, and really that they're treated with dignity and respect in the workplace. Just another plug, Sacramento Labor Council will be hosting a Labor Day picnic at Fairy Tale Town. I will be in the dunk tank, I believe a few of us will be in the dunk tank as well. And so come on by. And happy Labor Day to everyone in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Vang. Councilmember Talemantes.
I will also do the dunk tank, so we're gonna have a lot of fun. But this weekend, the Natumis Gori Arts Center is a recipient of the City of Festivals grant through economic development. And they're hosting a Harvest the Arts Festival. So if you are in town, come by the South Natumis Community Center.
Thank you, Councilmember Talemantes. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to announce that the Elks Lodge Weekly Farmer's Market is taking place every Saturday morning from 8 to 1 PM. We have fresh and organic food, as well as bakery goods, fresh flowers, candles, local honey, and much, much more. We want you to come on out, bring your family, you can even bring your dogs. We have live music and food trucks and it's at the intersection of Riverside and Florin Road. Once again, that's every Saturday morning from 8 to 1 PM. And then on September the 15th, we're gonna have our trucks and such. It's coming to Garsha Bend Park in the Pocket Neighborhood. We want you to bring your families, your blankets, your chairs. Join us for an evening of live music, delicious foods, provided by the SACto Mofo Food Trucks, and just a great time to get to know your neighbors and your friends. We hope to see you there.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. From District 6, I'd like to put folks on your calendar, September 8th, the Family Justice Center is having its eighth annual Celebration of Hope, helping the survivors of human trafficking, domestic violence, elder abuse, and child abuse with our Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center located in the Power and Alliance. If you could join out and help this worthy cause, we greatly appreciate it. With that, if you didn't hear it the first time, or the second time, or the third time, maybe the fourth, how about a fifth time? Hope to see you all at the Labor Day picnic and join the joint...
He's going in the dunk tank!
With that, we are adjourned at 8:24 PM. Thank you, everyone, for great work tonight.